Mr. Swindler, you have some comments?
Start with the public comments?
Yes. No. We thought you wanted to make a few comments.
Oh, yes, I would, if I may. I'd like to make a few comments tonight. My name is Jimmy Swindler, and I'm the principal of the building that we're in tonight. First of all, we want to say, welcome. We're glad to have you in our high school, in your high school. I'm not here tonight, by the way. I'm Stonewall Hawthorne District, and I'm not here tonight to make a public comment on one side or the other of any of the issues that we have before you. I'm standing here tonight to make a request. As the leader of the adults in this building, myself and my staff strive every day to set a positive example for our students. I would ask you all here tonight, as you are in our building, to try to do the same. Doesn't matter to me what side of what issue you're on. Speak your piece about whatever side of the issue you're on, but please refrain from some of the things that we've seen in the paper of late. Remember, we're in a high school, and even though there are no students here today, all of your words and your actions are going to be reported somewhere, and our young people are going to see them. And I hope that your words and actions are those that you would like to see our young people emulate. Again, thank you very much for being here. We have a favorite cheer or chant that we use at a lot of our games and events. It's very simple. It goes, "We are Rappahannock," and it sits here because whether we agree or not on whatever issues are before us, we are all Rappahannock, and I'm glad to see us all here. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
One of the first things is that one of the items on the agenda has been moved forward so we can clear it. Q1 has been moved to...
Q1 has been moved to P1.
The first item is a special exception, 1806-20, RAPU special exception. This is essentially to allow RAPU to have their classes held at the old Sperryville School Building. Requires special exception this summer, so hopefully she's here will give an introduction version hiding in the back.
Mr. Chairman, before we begin RAPU, I need to disclose that I am a member of the Board on RAPU. I asked the county administrator to contact Mr. Pito down in Richmond to see whether or not I had a conflict of interest in participating in this matter. He issued a ruling that, because I have no financial interest in RAPU, I do not have a conflict of interest, but I want to state that before the Board and make sure it gets reflected on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Schoolhouse properties in RAPU have applied...
Move the mic, please.
Is this good? Thank you. Schoolhouse properties in RAPU have applied for a special exception permit under Section 170-36B of the Rappahannock County Code, technical schools to allow their school to be housed within the old schoolhouse building, which is located on Route 211. RAPU has been located at the Sperryville Trading Post since January 2017. As their lease is expiring, they are looking to move to this new location, and they are looking forward to their gain of partnership with Lord Fairfax Community College. They have found that their current facility has become inadequate for their needs. This property is owned commercial and is 4.1 acres in size. They will be housed on the first floor west side of the building. They anticipate classrooms will hold up to 25 students. There's adequate parking available for students and teachers, and approval has been obtained from VDOT. Their commercial standard entrance meets the current requirements. The Rappahannock County Water and Sewer 30 have also commented that the sewer system has the capacity to handle the additional EDUs if any are required for the school. The Planning Commission reviewed this application. They did not feel a public hearing was required or needed, and therefore recommended by a vote of seven to zero approval of this application.
I'll just note that this is a public hearing. It was advertised in the paper as such, and the adjacent property owners were all notified.
That is correct.
Is the applicant here? Do they want to... Mr. Schiffman, do you like to say anything?
Just that largely due to the partnership with Lord Fairfax, who's teaching two Lord Fairfax classes at our facility now, and the need for more parking, we need additional space, and we just can't get it where we are. And we're looking forward to putting the school back into a schoolhouse, so I hope the section is approved.
Would that be appropriate to open the floor for a public hearing?
For the public hearing, anyone wishing to speak will have the opportunity to do so. Just simply raise your hand to be recognized. When recognized, state your name and the district that you're in, and restrict your comments to the Board. I declare the public hearing open. Anybody want to comment? I declare the public hearing closed. Next item.
Oh, well, staff is available to answer any questions you have before you consider the approval of that. Was there a hand back there? No hand. Any other comments? Well, let me reiterate. Chair, open the floor to a public hearing. If you have comments on the RAPU special exception, you're welcome to provide those now. Here's that there are no persons wanting to speak at public hearing. So if the Board is of mind to approve this special exception, motion would be in order. Michelle Worlern, any conditions attached to the Planning Commission's recommendation?
It's staff recommendation that this building could be used as a school. Just wanted to make sure that we had that in record.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve the special exception.
Well, I have to say, this is Piedmont District, and I haven't received any feedback positive or negative on the special exception, and it's been well-publicized, which would lead me to believe that we should go ahead and approve the special exception this evening. And I'd like to put that in the form of a motion.
I'll second that.
Any other comments? Motion made and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Mr. Chairman, I abstain.
Thank you. Next item is the School Connector Trail Review and Cudorection.
Thank you, sir. Well, we'll go with that notes. As I think everybody in the community is aware, the Board has heard from RAP Trails Coalition as to their interest in a school connector trail, which was funded by the Virginia Department of Transportation through a TA set-aside grant for 80/20 match program, meaning the VDOT covers 80% of the grant, and locality needs to cover 20% of the grant. The Board passed a resolution back in October authorizing the submission of that grant, and it was since awarded by VDOT. RAP Trails Coalition worked hard to fundraise the other 20%. Most of that was through a PATH Foundation grant, two grants totaling $150,000. The remaining amount of money was fundraised locally through cash donations to RAP Trails Coalition to bridge the 80/20 overall capital cost and design costs of the grant. In order to move forward with this project, the Board asked me to develop a memorandum of understanding to identify which parties would be responsible for what, and I've provided that in draft form to the Board at your last meeting. That memorandum of understanding is between the Board of Supervisors and the RAP Trails Coalition, and speaks to the obligations that would be placed upon RAP Trails Coalition and the Board of Supervisors should the project move forward. Those obligations generally attempt to pass to RAP Trails Coalition the financial responsibilities of the 20% match and the maintenance that is required by VDOT through their grant documents to pass that on to RAP Trails Coalition. In addition, the maintenance would be passed along to RAP Trails Coalition. The way the documents are set up, there are several. There's a resolution in the packet that would authorize the Chair to execute the MOU with RAP Trails Coalition, the VDOT administrative agreement, the grant agreement with the PATH Foundation, as well as an agreement with the Rappahannock Rapid and Regional Commission. The RRRC, as it's otherwise known, would provide project management for a fee. So these documents are all in the packet. They've changed some from the last meeting when they were presented to the Board. The changes include inserting the 15-year life into the documents, whereas before there was a blank because that information was not known. VDOT's grant requires the asset to be maintained for 15 years to avoid any clawback of federal grant dollars if the asset were no longer to be made available. The other change is to insert a requirement at the three paragraphs that control or have the off-ramps for the county to require a 15% contingency to be included or incorporated into the budget at that time. For example, if the project moves forward, the first step of the project would be to put an RFP on the street to solicit and then hire an engineering consultant to actually design the trail in detail. That contract is going to take some considerable cost, and moving forward from that, if the design cost coming out of that will be defined, and then the balance of the budget available would have to include an additional 15% in order to move forward. I'm not saying that very well. Let me pull up the document, and we can read it. So if after engineering and design work, project cost estimates, including 15% contingency, exceed available funds, then the first option is for RAP Trails to find additional revenue, likely in the form of an additional VDOT grant. They would then be responsible for that 20% match. If they can secure those funds, then if they cannot, if they can secure the local match funds, Rappahannock will seek additional funds from VDOT. So if RAP Trails can find the 20%, we'll submit another grant. If they can't, RAP Trails will have an opportunity to seek the funds independent of a grant. And then if there are funds that are insufficient to move forward, then the Board reserves the right to cancel the project. That same language carries over at the remaining phases of the project. So if the project cost estimates that come forward after the design is done and the construction bids come in, we would have to have a 15% contingency on top of the bid before we move forward. And so... So I reduced all that information into a financial risk review, which has been posted on Board Docs, that shows what I understood to be a best-case scenario, a planned scenario, a likely risk scenario, and a worst-case scenario. The worst-case scenario is as it states. If... This would be the most money that the county could be out if things didn't go forward as we would hope, and RAP Trails was not able to provide any additional revenue, and no other grants are available from PATH Foundation or VDOT or any other sources. So that is the worst-case scenario. The column I label as likely risk is the risk that would... If risks occur, these would be the risks that are likely. It doesn't mean that these are going to happen. The planned scenario is listed under planned scenario, but if risks occur, which are not guaranteed, I would suspect that they will happen in this column, and I'd like to go through them, and this is my professional judgment. After we accept the grant, but before we hire a design firm, if the likely risk is that we'd be unable to contract for engineering services within the budget available, and if that's the case and we hire somebody more than our budget, then it would put a strain on the remainder portion of the budget. The worst case there would be we just cancel the project, and there's no risk at all before we hire a consultant. After project engineering is complete, so we hire a design professional, they go through, they do all the design, and we find out at that point that the design is... The potential cost for the trail is much more expensive than we thought. In that case, RAP Trails would have the opportunity to raise additional funds, and if they could find the 20% needed for an additional VDOT grant, the county would agree to apply for that additional VDOT grant, and then those additional funds, if they're awarded, would go towards the project, and we would move forward. If they cannot find those additional funds, that's the worst-case scenario, in which case you could, if you spent all of the funding that is available in FY '19, which is set aside for design, you could spend up to $239,000. Of those $239,000, 80% of that is the VDOT funds that could be subject to being recalled by VDOT. 20% is match money paid by the PATH grant that would not have to be turned back, only unspent dollars from PATH would have to be turned back to PATH. And then the remaining money would be cash provided by RAP Trails Coalition of $56,468, meaning that the maximum liability to the county would be $134,732 if no further grant funding could be identified by RAP Trails Coalition. If RAP Trails Coalition provides their maintenance money upfront, that could further reduce that liability. They've offered $30,000 for maintenance, and so you could see what that would further reduce. Another potential option that's been brought to my attention, which seems to make sense, is during the design process, you could include in your contract for design a 30% or 50% design stage whereby the engineer recalculates their estimate of construction cost at an earlier stage in the project. And if they do that, then they would not have expended all of the $239,000, or a portion thereof that is assigned to design, and therefore the amount of maximum amount would be much less to the county. It would still be positive. The next stage of the project would be after we receive the detailed design and we send it out to bid. So now the design was done for what we expect it to be. The engineer's opinion of probable cost was within budget and the 15%. We put it out to bid, and the bids are well above what the budget is available, plus 15%. And if, in that case, just like the other, RAP Trails Coalition has an opportunity to seek the 20% needed to match another VDOT grant, and the county would be willing to go forward and apply for another VDOT grant. So the likely risk, as I've seen in other projects in other communities, is that VDOT will work with the community to provide additional grants. Whether PATH Foundation or others would provide additional match or additional cash from citizens would be available, I don't know. So the likely risk, in my opinion, is that it would take time to find additional grants to develop, to increase your budget so you could afford what the bid cost is, and then you'd have to bid the project again. Worst case is that you are not able to find additional money for a higher cost, and if that's the case, you're still out all of the design money, the unmatched design money. So that's $134,000. I've worked a project in my last community that went to bid three times because there was not available funding. We changed the bid documents three times, and finally, VDOT came forward with additional grant funding. So I've seen that process go through. It's not guaranteed. And lastly, after you award a bid for a contract that is within budget, there is the possibility of unforeseen conditions in the field, whatever they may be. So something the engineer didn't anticipate through their detailed design, as we said, could be bones or bullets, and in that case, we would have an opportunity for RAP Trails Coalition to again identify additional funding resources. In this case, it'd be more likely to be cash than an additional VDOT grant, because there wouldn't be time for an additional VDOT grant in that case. So it might be a short-duration grant from PATH Foundation or another organization, or citizen donations in the community. They would have that opportunity. This is, I believe, based on my interpretation of citizen involvement, that there are citizens in the community that would come forward in this situation, but I can't guarantee that. And that's why the worst-case scenario is listed, and that is if you... If the county were to wrap up the project and shut down the project because there was not enough funds, the federal government could come back and clawback the entirety of the grant funds that they're providing, which is $815,000. There's very little chance of that ever happening because the change order risk is much likely, very much lower than that. So the Board would always have a preferential path to provide the funding for the change order for the unforeseen risk rather than pay back the federal government. You would pay a $200,000 change order rather than pay back the full grant amount. But that is the maximum worst case. It's impossible to say whether that would come... Could come about as a 1% chance, or a 5% chance, or some other percent. I think it's very limited after you get to this stage of detailed design that you would find something so egregious that the Board would be in a condition where it would be a very large dollar amount that can't be filled by the community. But it is a risk nonetheless. These are the critical decision points the Board should be considering as you think forward and go, and the community as well, decide whether you can move forward on this project. And in doing so, if you were to pass a resolution that's in the packet, you would be authorizing the Chairman to execute the grant with VDOT, to execute the MOU with RAP Trails Coalition, to execute the agreement with PATH Foundation for the grant, as well as to execute the agreement with RRRC for project management. Earlier today, we have a little bit of a wrinkle thrown into this in that the resolution also includes an appropriation for the first-year amount of funding for this project, which is $239,000 of expenditure, which is the maximum amount allowed by VDOT through their six-year improvement program. The appropriation made by the Board this morning would not allow that full appropriation to go forward tonight because the state law requires the Board to hold a public hearing when you exceed 1% of the total additional appropriation since your last approved budget through public hearing. The full $239,000 would put you over that amount, so the Board could consider a lesser amount to get the project started if you wanted to, knowing that the project could be scaled on time to align with available dollars. There's not a requirement for the grant to spend the full $239 in the first year. Whatever's not spent would spill over into the second and subsequent years of the grant. The hard and fast time for the grant, one is that you finish your project scoping by next year, and the other is that you start construction by 2022. The only other timeline that I'm aware of is relative to the federal government, and that is if you don't advance the project in a 10-year period, that's when they start to look at clawing back the funds that would show up in that worst-case scenario. Hopefully, that's enough of a primer to allow the citizens to let you know how they feel. I'll leave it to the Chairman to let the community know how that process is going to work.
If I could ask a question or two, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Excuse me. Mr. Curry, you elaborated quite... All right, I'll try and do better job. Mr. Curry, you elaborated quite a few times on the MOU with RAP Trails, but VDOT does not recognize the MOU with RAP Trails, do they not?
That is correct. So VDOT has an agreement with the Board of Supervisors. It's their standard grant agreement that they use for all of these TA set-aside projects, and that grant agreement includes an Appendix A that is detailed for this project. And VDOT is placing certain requirements upon the Board of Supervisors, including paying 20% and providing the maintenance. You're then trying to convey those requirements onto other parties through the MOU, and that's... If the other party doesn't follow through with their requirements of the MOU, that's where a risk comes in.
Okay, and the way I read the MOU, unless something changed since this afternoon, it's not legal. The MOU with RAP Trails is not legally enforceable?
I will defer to the county attorney on that. I'm not sure why it's not legally enforceable.
What part of it is legally enforceable? I didn't see where it was legally enforceable.
Well, both parties are signing onto an agreement, and you're making... The Board will be making certain representations of what you will do, and RAP Trails Coalition is making certain representations of what they will do.
I know they signed that they will do it, but what surety does the county have that they will do that?
You have their cash in hand only and the cash for the maintenance. So the consequence of them not following through is, in fact, canceling the project, which does have financial risk to the county.
To the county, right.
Is it a contract, Mr. Curry?
Well, a contract could be a conversation and a handshake, so yes. It's an agreement between two parties that explains what each side is willing to offer in exchange for each other's services. The Board could modify the MOU to your liking with whatever terms you think is appropriate. I view what is in the packet is basically an offer from RAP Trails Coalition to provide this asset to the community. If it's not acceptable to a majority of the Board, then perhaps some other terms would be, and the Board could identify what those would be.
Is that it, Mr. Curry?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
The next item on the agenda says, "Community input..."
louder, please.
And what were the... It's a state's community input, and we don't really know exactly what that is. We're just going to treat this as if it's a public hearing. And anyone wishing to speak, simply raise your hand, and when recognized, you can come up to the podium and, I guess, you know, ask a question or make a statement and direct your comments to the Board. I'll declare the hearing open. You can go first, Jane. I think you should.
Are there time limits?
Three minutes.
Hi, I'm Jane Whitfield, Jackson District, and welcome to everyone. It's good to see you all here. Hope you learned some information tonight. I am very excited about this project, and that term, I know, makes a lot of you laugh, but I think it's a great project for the community. I'm going to cede this time to Jonathan Ritchie from Bowler Engineering. Jonathan was the engineer who managed the concept plan and the engineering plan, and we have asked him to provide some information for all of you since there is quite a bit of misinformation going around.
Thank you, Jane, for the intro here. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay, thank you. Good evening, Supervisors. As Jane mentioned, I'm Jonathan Ritchie with Bowler Engineering. We are the firm that prepared the preliminary findings and cost analysis for the larger section as well as the school connectors trail. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have about that and also kind of discuss a few other items that have been... that have been kind of thrown out there, misconstrued, and things of that nature. So I guess first I'll ask, is there any questions that the supervisors may have from our findings?
Twice now, both you and Ms. Whitfield have said something about things were misconstrued. What are you alleging? What are you alleging has been misconstrued as far as topic of discussion in the community?
Just information out in the community that I've heard. A lot of it regarding environmental impacts, costs analysis, things of that nature. And I can certainly elaborate on that. Do you have specifics that...
Well, yeah, one of them that's been discussed is that there's no cost numbers with the wetlands. Do you have numbers?
So we do have numbers.
But they're not in your report?
Because there's no evidence of wetlands at this time on the mile connector trail.
Have you walked the trail?
I have walked the trail. And so there's a, I know that you've got a lot of chuckles in the crowd, but fortunately, it takes a professional to delineate wetlands. The available mapping that we have through the NWI, the National Wetlands Inventory, does not indicate any wetlands through that area. There's three components that you need to meet for a wetland: vegetation, soils, and hydrology. And all three of those have to be met before it can be delineated as a wetland.
So at what time during the design stage do you do the wetland study?
So that would be with the preliminary engineering part. And that wetland study is included in the preliminary engineering costs.
So, I mean, is that 30 days in? Is that 60 days in? Is it 90 days in?
It would be a project kickoff. So it would be about the same time as surveying. That, for a mile trail, that would all probably be within 30 days after execution of agreements. You would probably have a turnaround to get the documents back within around 30 days to 45 days.
The reason, though, that people in the community have even discussed wetlands is because you have mentioned it in the preliminary report.
The preliminary report addresses the entire proposed or future six-mile trail. So that's one of the things that, you know, needs to be mentioned is the report and the text document that goes with that is related to an entire six-mile trail that was originally proposed and possibly for the future.
Well, we're asking him questions.
Yeah, this is, this is not a public...
So do you, do you give us a remediation? I mean, if you find wetlands, do you do a remediation report? Or what do we, what do we get here to know how this, you know, that this cost may go from X to Y to Z?
Okay, so I'll, I'll answer that in a couple, a couple ways. One, so the process would be that a certified environmental scientist goes out, walks the trail path, delineates, flags the wetlands. The next step would be that the Army Corps of Engineers comes out and what they do, what they call jurisdictional determination, that solidifies the determination of the wetlands. And then, once those are delineated, they are put on a survey. And options from there exist of either avoiding the wetlands or trying to minimize where you go through them, so when areas where they neck down. The second, just from a number standpoint, the second thing I would say is, just running some quick numbers. If you were to, let's pretend the whole mile trail is a, is a wetland, eight feet wide, which we know does not exist. We also would not impact all eight feet. We would do a peer to kind of system to minimize, minimize the impacts. You, you could assume from an average mitigation cost today that 75% of the wetland would be, of the trail would be wetlands, and you would still not hit the contingency number that we have in the cost analysis.
What contingency number do you have?
We have a, we have a 30% contingency in there. I believe it's around a couple, a couple hundred thousand dollars.
But that's a, that's a contingency for everything, right? Wetlands and any other obstacles that you may run into?
Unforeseen's. And, and that's a rather large number at this time, 30%, given the information. What you typically do, and I think Mr. Curry mentioned, is as you get more information, surveys, analysis, you try to dwindle that number down to give you a better idea of the overall cost of the project.
One last question. Are there any other obstacles, if that's the right word, other than wetlands that you've observed in, either in studying this path? Topography?
Absolutely. I mean, this section, if you...
Soils?
So if you were to, if you were to look at this mile section compared to the overall six-mile section, this is probably the simplest or easiest section to start with. It's one of the reasons why it was chosen. From a topography standpoint, the earthwork is not expected to be a heavy cost. We did identify one stream in there. That runs around $500 to $1,000 of linear feet, which is included. We anticipate about 12 feet of stream crossing. So that is included in the cost. So I can't say 100% for sure that there's no unforeseen's. But if you're looking at the entire six-mile section and you dwindle it down to this one-mile section, it's, it's a pretty good section to start with.
Apologize for not having all my notes after running over here from our other meeting that went till forever. But I think I hit just about everything that I wanted to touch on before. I suspect you will want to ask, and I intended to have the engineer provide a bit of a report before we got going, but it didn't occur to me at that time. I suspect you will want to ask him questions after you hear from a number of citizens. There'll be a number of questions that theoretically Bowler has considered in their preliminary study and would have to consider in the design.
I'm certainly here for questions. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm John Marshall. I live at the corner of 719 Aaron Mountain Road. And we use the landfill over there. And I know you guys, I think I pretty much know all you guys. John Lozinski, somebody, what's his name? Christine. Oh, yeah, right, Mr. Frazier, Mr. Parrish. I've known him for probably 40 or 50 years. And then Roger Welch. And I'm going to be looking at y'all as we go along because we do live here, this is Rappahannock. And Mr. Swindler encouraged us to be polite. He didn't say like on TV, because they are polite too. But this thing needs to be, just don't do it. Flat-out, don't do it, Chris. And you've got these reasons why. And we're dancing around road things. I took a course in 1977 on highway cost construction. And it hadn't really changed. But it was about a million dollars a mile then. But what if you left something on the table? What if you bid the job, you got the job, and then you found out that there was, you know, 800 yards or something of route mat? Where the roots are so thick and deep that you got to blast to get it out of there. What if there's stone underneath there that you've got to deal with? There's also a thing called borrow, where you borrow dirt from someplace and bring it over there. So, or where you, if it were hilly, you would cut dirt away and haul it off someplace else. Those are highway cost construction items that Bowler's going to be well aware of. But when you all sign agreements, it's the whole weight of the county that's assigning that agreement. I mean, it's not just the five of you. And if it ends up that, and there's another word that Mr. Curry used, and it's used frequently, he was talking about clawing back. Well, I have a more, what I would call a vivid picture. It's not clawing back, it's disgorgement. You have this money in your county, and they're disgorging it. They're reaching down your whiny throat to pull it out past your soft teeth. And they're going to get it. The government will have to do that, the federal, or in this case, the VDOT. So don't do this. I mean, just don't do it. No, I... John Marshall. They all know me.
Hello, my name's John Kaiser. I'm in the Piedmont District. Live over in Slate Mills. I've been living in the county for 40-odd years. And one of the things I've noticed and learned is that there are a lot of people in this county for whom a $100 increase in their taxes is a big deal. And something tells me that the people who are promoting this project don't fall into that category. And I think if the people who have been promoting this are sincere, genuinely sincere in their claim that they don't want the taxpayer to be liable for anything, although they've never put it that way. It's always been, it won't cost the taxpayer anything. They're genuinely sincere about that. There's a pretty simple way to address it. It's the same way RAP Cats did. They took care and feeding of cats off your list of things to worry about. They created an endowment. And that endowment is dedicated to taking care of the cats. So my suggestion is that the promoters of this plan come up with an endowment. $2 million, one and a half, three, I don't know. But let's just say $2 million. That would be roughly $100,000 a year. That that endowment would be dedicated specifically to making sure the taxpayers in this county are not affected by this program. And after 15 years, if there's still any money left in the pot, maybe they get it back. That would be something to be negotiated. But if you had an overly generous amount of money committed to protecting the taxpayer, no liability, then I think a lot of the discord and unhappiness would disappear. And from what I know, there's plenty of money behind this. But they're going, doing it on the cheap. And I don't think that's in their interest, and I don't think it's in the county's interest because it's obvious that there are all kinds of unknowns. And all you have to look at is the storms we've had in the last month to get an idea. The chaos that can be created just by weather. And I think it would be foolish of the board to not require an endowment or an indemnification agreement that is airtight protecting the taxpayers of the county. Thank you.
Mark Condequist here from Amisville. Let me just start off by saying that as far as the bike trail is concerned, I really don't have any feelings for it one way or the other, as long as the taxpayers don't have to pay for it. One of the questions I have is why can't the RAP Trails folks have fundraisers and, as John mentioned, an endowment, to have all of the money upfront before the project even gets off the ground? I equate it to almost along the situation where you have serious problems in your house. Your roof's about to fall in, walls are falling apart, but yet you've got it in your mind to go on a four-week vacation to the South Sea Islands, and that's what you're going to do. As far as the trails, as I said, I don't really care one way or the other. I don't plan on using it. But I don't want the taxpayers to be caught on the hook as a result. But I don't want any of my tax money to do it. The county is already committed on a number of very expensive projects. For one thing, we know that our county buildings are falling apart. We have county employees who are working in them in rather unsafe conditions. The walls leak, the windows leak. We've had two fires in the courthouse already, which fortunately occurred during the daytime when the smoke was seen and smelled by county employees. If it had happened at 2:00 in the morning, there's a good chance we'd also be building a new courthouse. We have a commitment of over $300,000 for a public safety radio and paging system, which affects everybody in this room in terms of responding to your emergency. The county has already expended funds in that direction. The county's committed to pay 10% of the total cost. Fokker and Culpepper are paying 90%. And the reason we're paying 90% or 10% is because we don't have the money. The Kramer Building, where several of our county offices are located, there are six employees who are working in an area of about 600 square feet. They only have one way in and one way out of that building. So it's a fire trap. It does not meet the fire codes. And directly overhead is Tula's Restaurant. And in the back part of that is where their kitchen is. And if there should be a fire during the daytime, those six employees may not be able to get out alive. That's something to consider. There is no emergency generator on that building, which is shared with a designated emergency operations center, which is required in the event that this county has a very serious problem. The high school is designated as an emergency designated shelter. There is no generator here, and it's going to cost $1,200 just to do a survey to make sure that the generator can take place. So of all of those issues, I know the county is already committed to take care of the county buildings and these other issues. Why on earth would we want to take the $239,000 or whatever it happens to be, to be committed to something like this? If the RAP Trails folks want to build it, fine. Let them come up with all the money ahead of time and then start the project, in which case I'd say, go ahead and do it. But I don't want a dime of my county tax money to be supporting a test which is not going to benefit all the people in the county at the same time. Thank you.
My name is Tom Junk. I'm in the Piedmont District. Been beside the corner store now, some other things now. Jimmy Schwindler was right about civility. But there's also one other thing. The truth needs to be told on these kind of projects. Civility, it was so civil, the opposition, actually, someone came in my yard and stole the sign. It was so civil that a couple people against the trail were asked to leave the business. So civility and truth need to get back in Rappahannock County. I was involved in a Gateway project. Couple board members here were on the Board of Supervisors at the Gateway project. The supervisors in that time put up $10,000. It was up to our committee to get the rest of the money, which was $225,000, and then coordinating with the state. But all the county put up was $10,000 as seed money, not the be-all and end-all to a project. So I don't understand why... And the most of that money came from John McCarthy working on the project, the $10,000. So the taxpayers really weren't out any money. At the most, they were out $10,000 from that particular project. So, and, and you have dealt with a entity that, the lights, the lights at the school here. You know, that was a group you dealt with. Okay, we're going to do the lights. The county had to end up paying for those lights. So when you deal with someone or an entity, I'm not saying that they're bad or whatever. I think John Kaiser is exactly right. You have to have the money upfront because organizations won't be here forever. I thank you very much for your time.
You know, it could be possible that two people could walk...
You know, it could be possible that two people could walk. Yes, Damaris.
Members of the board, in the interest of time, I'm Damaris Miller from Hampton District. I'll be very brief. I am, I've spoken before on this, you know a lot of my feelings. I think those gentlemen, the four gentlemen who went ahead of me, really said the most important things, and I cannot top what they have said. This bike trail may be a good idea, but as any economist will tell you, wants are insatiable. Resources are limited. Our resources are limited. I wanna thank the board for giving the money that is needed for our Head Start program. That's not just a want, that is a need. We need repairs to the buildings. We need many things in this county. We need the citizens of this county to be taken care of first. I think the idea of a bike trail is delightful, but we cannot afford it. And I absolutely agree. I think the best idea was when John spoke and said that he wanted them to endow it. I don't care whether you do an irrevocable line of credit or an endowment, but I can tell you that a memorandum of understanding is worth the paper it's written on. And I'm not going to be satisfied with that. I urge you not to vote to pass this project under these conditions. We can't afford it. It may be nice, but it is not Rappahannock.
She yielded her time already. She's already used her time.
I feel the need to clarify something for folks, so I'm gonna do that.
Chairman, point of order. Point of order.
So he's already used her time.
Make a ruling, guys.
She's already used her time.
So you don't want me to speak now?
No. No, she yielded her time.
My name's Bill Fletcher. I live in Piedmont District. Mr. Chairman, Board of Supervisors, Ms. Smith, Mr. Curry, Ms. Goff. I wanna put a little different slant on this. I agree with John, everybody in this is well-intentioned. There are two things I know. One, my father told me sixty years ago, what you want on the Board of Supervisors is somebody that's as careful with the county's money as they are with their own. I think there are a lot of unknowns at this project right now. I also wanna mention to you a conversation I had with Pete Essens about thirty years ago at his kitchen table. We were talking about the county and the future development of it, and he brought up this conductor trail. He said it'd be a damn good idea to have a conductor trail between the two schools, which I agree with that. And also to run the sewer and the road between the two schools so you didn't have the traffic on the highway, so your kids would be safer. I think that would be, that is something that eventually you're gonna have to expand the sewer systems at the school. It's been my understanding the sewer systems have been failing for a number of years at the school. I don't have any documentation, that's just what I've heard. But I would hate to see a bike path, the county to be involved in something that would be detrimental to the future development of the county. The other thing I'll mention to you about a bike trail, if you want a bike trail, there are a number of pieces of property at Rappahannock that have not given fees simple to the Highway Department. Thornton Hill and Montpelier, I mean George Millers and Montpelier being part of, they just have an interest on the top of the land. There's nothing saying anywhere that I know of that I couldn't grant to Rappahannock County if they choose it, a mile section of the road which could be painted and designated a bike path, and it would cost the county virtually nothing. And I don't think the Highway Department could stop it. So here, I'm looking at this, it hadn't even been investigated, but all the Highway Department has in a lot of places, they don't owe fee necessarily on 522, 231. They only have the right of ingress and egress. I'm still, as a landowner, allowed to donate that land to someone else. I'm paying tax on all the property under the roads right now. There's a possibility you could go and get a bike trail over a mile long at no cost, except painting and maybe some administrative stuff with the Highway Department. Has anybody investigated that? Before you take, and I know I'm a little over time, before you take on an obligation that could be a couple million dollars to the citizens in one form or another in Rappahannock County, why don't you investigate the roads and the right-aways from the Highway Department? I bet you their right-way department would know pretty quick. And if that happened, it was, all this problem goes away. You've got a mile bike trail, and it costs you nothing. Right now, all I hear is it's gonna cost us two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Or possibly. Why not look at other alternatives? And also, I disagree fundamentally because of the future of the county and the development and how it's gonna develop where you have the industrial and mechanical areas in this county. If you take a bike path designated only as a bad path and put it in the middle between the two schools, you may be causing a problem for future generations greater than any benefit you're having now. If you ever wanna sit down, I'll be glad to go over with you what Pete did, I talked about, it didn't make sense. It made a hell of a lot of sense for the future growth of this county. But you're just looking at this piece, you know, I think you've gotta look at it in a larger perspective. And there's one other thing I'd like to do, and it'd take ten seconds. How many people are in favor of the bike trail? Please raise your hands.
Yeah, that is not...
Okay, put 'em down. How many people are against the bike trail?
Roger.
I mean, if the public rules, I think that's pretty quick. Nice seeing you, gentlemen and ladies.
I'm from the Wakefield District. I get it that a lot of people here don't wanna take any risks. So I'm gonna take a big risk and say that I think this trail is a great idea. Excuse me, but it's my turn. There are several misperceptions floating around here. One is that the county's gonna be on the hook for a lot of money upfront. But the rap trails group has raised over a million dollars, including VDOT money and money from private foundations. So the expectation is that all the costs will be met from this money that's been raised. As Mr. Curry outlined, there may be some unanticipated risks that would require the raising additional money. But those are, those I think are manageable risks, and the benefit of this trail, I think, way outweighs the risk that's involved. It's not a question of the money going to this or to fixing county buildings, for example. These are VDOT funds that are, have to be spent on transportation-related projects. So it's not that we can take this money and spend it on something like Head Start or like improving buildings. And the benefits of this trail are, fall largely to the schools. They would have an alternative exit. They'd have a place for students to exercise. It would also be a benefit to children where they could learn to ride their bicycles. It would be a benefit to the elderly who would have a place to walk, safe from vehicles. So yes, there are risks, but I think the potential benefits to our elderly, to our children, to our school and the school curriculum, and the school's Commit to be Fit program really outweigh what are, appear to be quite manageable risks. Thank you very much.
I just want to say that I am sorry for my...
Your name?
I am also a taxpayer. I am living in the county and own land and have been here since nineteen fifty-two. Raised my family and fed them from the farm. My husband, Gordon Thornhill, did mostly farming and then ran the farmers' co-op, which he was very dedicated to it. So I have lived here, done that, and I think that spending this much money from the poor people in the county when we need to spend more money on our schools and make sure that our children get a decent education and ask for, is riding a bike? I rode a bike as a child, and I rode it actually in the yard and on the farm that we had. I'm from Madison County and came from a farm there. And I say no to the bike trail. We just do not need this. We need too many other things. And our county actually is probably one of the poor counties. So why should we have a county that would be big enough to serve New York City? And I think we are trying to overdo it, and we should consider the poor people in our family and in our county and take care of our seniors. And I pray that we won't waste the money that we've worked so hard for. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Tony Van Acker. I'm from Cassington. I'm a proud resident of Rappahannock County. I'm also a board member of the Park Authority. And frankly, I'm quite disappointed that the Board of Supervisors in the rap trails organization has not considered that they have something right underneath their nose which is a very good place for exercise. You can walk, you can do all kinds of recreation, except maybe bicycling. Why was not the park section nominated first to provide a riding pace? It fits the use of the park, and it avoids and bypasses a lot of the issues that we're talking about here today. Now, I know there's been a lot of talk about the finances, and I think Mr. Curry has given a real fine analysis of the financial risk. It's a very professional job, and I thank you for it. And it may be true that we're not out money. However, what I'm worried about is it's a limited-use trail. If I understand it, there are issues related to parking, there are issues related to time of use. And I have a friend in Amistville who's a stroke victim, and he would, he's a supporter of the trail, or a trail, and he'd like to get out. But if the trail is limited in use, to be four, eight in the morning until after four in the afternoon, he's not gonna really be able to use it because in the summertime it's gonna be blazing hot, and he's not gonna go there during the middle of the day anyway. And during the nice times of the year, which is, you know, the other months usually, the schools are going to forbid him to come. So why should we be paying for a limited-use trail? Why should money go toward a limited-use trail when there are six other miles that can be put in? Now, I think I know the reason why the schools section was selected first, because the VDOT's Transportation Alternatives Program requires you to get a right-of-way for all the properties you're going to cross. And from what I understand, the right-of-way is not necessary for the school. But if you had started from the park or any other section, you would have to get a right-of-way. Agreed. And frankly, I think getting the right-of-way is the big issue for completing the six-mile path, and what we're gonna end up with is a trail to nowhere. All right? It's gonna be a trail to nowhere, with no connection to the park and no connection to Sperryville. And if we could do it right, I think we could really have a limited-use trail turn into something to be full use. And we should really just take a little pause and go back to VDOT and say, can we use this money for this other section? And maybe we can get to better refinement on our estimates. Thank you.
My name's Mr. Pagano. I'm from the Wakefield District. I wanna thank all of you for trying to present adequate information. I wanna present, yeah, I wanna thank all of the folks up here in front of us for presenting some information that tries to make this more understandable, particularly Mr. Curry. But I have to say, all that has been said in favor of the bike trail is basically conjecture, based on a whole lot of assumptions. We need more than just scoping documents from which to make binding decisions. I think that's essential. Why are we, as a public government encumbering taxpayers in any way at all without specifics? Okay? I think that if the people were serious about this, they would have presented you with plans that gave specifics from which you could make intelligent, responsible decisions from. We don't have that. And I don't think there's any reason why the taxpayers should be asked to accept conjecture as a basis for making decisions. I'm opposed to the taxpayers being encumbered in any way, and accepting the grant is by its very nature binding only the taxpayers. That's simply the bottom line. There's no reason to do it. You don't have adequate information in which to make an intelligent decision from. Everything is just scoping documents and conjecture. Thank you.
Heidi Lysinski, Hampton District. And with all due respect, Mr. Chairman, the gentleman that preceded me has already addressed this board regarding this issue. Please, run this meeting. It has become... Okay, for example, should she be allowed to speak right now, Mr. Chairman? If you will allow me. It has become quite apparent to me that there are people in this community whose minds are blown by the notion that someone could show kindness to another human being without an ulterior motive. This permission, I'm sorry, this pessimism reveals far more about the morals of these individuals than it does about the kind and generous people who donate their time and talents and who open their wallets to support their neighbors and this community. I have watched The Ranker on RapNet over the trail issue. What started as a campaign of posting misinformation has devolved into a campaign promoting fear and a bizarre conspiracy theory culminating in a report that the project would cost taxpayers of this county two million dollars. And here's a direct quote. "It gives the impression that there is some force behind this which we, the citizens, don't know about." And this, "They have some other agenda that surely will benefit the glitterati, not the hard-working families of Rappahannock." This trail is not a bike path for the glitterati. If it was, I wouldn't support it either. It is a multi-use school connector trail with the support of the school system for two-year-olds to one-hundred-and-two-year-olds, whether they need a stroller, a cane, a walker, or a wheelchair. I was a hospital-based occupational therapist for twenty years. I... I reluctantly left that profession because of a recurring injury. Prior to that, I worked at Walter Reed Army Medical Center with service members debilitated by traumatic brain injury. I have treated hundreds of people that woke up able to hike these beautiful mountains, but by the end of the day, because of an accident or illness, would never again experience that kind of freedom. I have treated thousands more, whose loss of ability is more insidious. This handicapped, accessible trail is for them. They are welcome here, as are the hard-working families of Rappahannock, who may choose to enjoy a leisurely stroll in a safe place.
My name is Elsa Dixon. I lived in Rappahannock County in Cassleton for 15 years. Every time that they say it's not cost to the taxpayer money, it is, it's coming for the mess. Every time they say, "We fix this thing, we fix that." No, it's not cost for the taxpayer money. No, you don't have to pay anything. There is again, 20 cents here, five cents there, how many others? You have another 10 cents more there. There is the taxpayer money. And well, many people here that doesn't pay, taxpayers. We pay. We pay a bunch of money for property. It's beautiful. Why have to ring Rappahannock County with a trail? It's beautiful walking. She said that she walked in Walter Reed. Yes, I walk in there too. My husband is military. I know, you suffer, you can walk through your house, through your fence there, you can do exercise. All people cannot walk. My husband cannot come in here and enjoy the beautiful bike trail because of the transit, because of the school. How can you come in here and say, oh, my husband doesn't cannot walk, but he can walk the trail that you pay for? Right? No. We cannot do that. It's beautiful. Why you can ring Rappahannock County thinking it's beautiful, leave a ring. Everybody can walk, everybody. All the people who go over there in houses and helping the older people, nobody. Sometimes you go knock, knock the door, "Are you still alive?" I don't hear anybody from the county to go and check in on all people. I don't hear that. I live in 616 in 620 between that one and that road. You can go there, it's a car road. Halls and you go, only one car go, one car go over there. Fix that road, it beat up. We send tons of letters, never answering to us, never. That's the one they had to fix first, not the trail.
My name is Alyssa Scroggins. I met you all earlier. And I'm going to stray away from the actual, like, taxpayers' dollars here because there's a whole nother scenario, and that is the children. You know, I have a three and a four-year-old, as I addressed earlier, and in my opinion, I would not let them on this trail. I am not going to allow my children to walk around on something, ride their bike on something that is along 211. I actually live on 70 Flatwood Lane. It turns from Flatwood Road to Flatwood Lane. This trail is going to affect my family's ability to pay our bills. My husband is also very well-known around the county for, you know, supplying support and, you know, mechanical needs to farms and other, you know, companies. So, I mean, how are we getting in and out of our driveway? Was there, you know, a contingency plan made for a secondary driveway for us? No. This is also going to affect, you know, my family and their risk, not to mention the risk of the other people in the school, because, you know, it may be closed during school hours, but there are still time for predators to, you know, enter that school in any way that they see fit before school opens. And, you know, Rappahannock, it doesn't live in this bubble. I mean, we live in a, you know, society that is not all good. It's not. We can't look at it like that anymore. You know, people may say that, you know, I shelter my children and, you know, I'm fearful, but I'm not. I am, I'm just not oblivious, okay? And I'm teaching them that. You know, they run towards the ocean, they are not scared, and they are heard, just like I'm going to be, just like everybody else here wants to be. You know, and, sorry, Mr. John Marshall, he, you know, stated, you know, something about, you know, hitting rock or roots. My dad, he owned a drilling and blasting company. I understand what entails that, and that can get expensive. Everybody knows that Rappahannock is very rocky. You know, and it's, sorry. But a big picture to look at this, other than taxpayers' dollars, which we do pay, you know, our taxes, we pay thousands of dollars in taxes every year, is the children. You know, you say this is a school connector trail, but I don't see it that way. I see it as, you know, a start for this, for their six-mile long-term plan. And they're using this as an excuse to start it. You know, oh, this is a good excuse to start it, you know? So, it's not for the people in the community. It's, you know, to bring in the tourists. If you were to listen to the people of the community which are here tonight, they will tell you they do not want this. I do not want this. My family does not want this. I can guarantee you that my children, when they grow up and they inherit our house, do not want this.
Yes, my name is Sharon Propper, and the gentleman in the blue shirt that was speaking earlier got just about everything I was going to talk about. I used to come out with my children and right out here in the front, the little tricycles and things that they could ride. But I was told that I was trespassing because it was after-school area, I mean, school time, and so I had to leave. But that was my point, you know? It's, if the trail is going to be open only at certain times for certain people, then what's the point? I mean, if I'm traveling at night and like to just go for a bike ride and I get pulled over because I'm trespassing? So, that was my point, but he got most everything I wanted to say. So, thank you all so much.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Cole from the Jackson District. Thank you, Board, and Mr. Curry for that great synopsis and evaluation of costs. There are a few things that I'd like to just address that have come up. And let me start by saying fundamentally, I'm not opposed to the trail. But like many others who have stood here, I am opposed to it being a taxpayer-funded trail. From what I understand, the trail was presented and sold as a no-cost to the county. So, when we talk about trusting people and, you know, all of this pessimism, well, it was misrepresented to begin with, so how can we trust that anything will happen the way it should happen? I have the definition of a memorandum of understanding here with me. It's a type of agreement between two or more parties that expresses a convergence of will between the parties indicating an intended common line of action. It's often used in either cases where parties do not imply a legal commitment or in situations where the parties cannot create a legally enforceable agreement. It is a more formal alternative to a gentleman's agreement. Whether a document constitutes a binding contract depends only on the presence or absence of well-defined legal elements in the text proper or the document. The required elements are offer and acceptance, consideration, and the intention to be legally-bound, and that's the key. In the U.S., specifics can differ slightly, blah, blah, blah. But the point is that even though we have an MOU, it is not legally enforceable unless the language in the document states that is legally binding. As far as the VDOT grant goes, we need to remember that it's a reimbursement of expenses paid, meaning that as the project progresses, county funds or wherever the funds are coming from need to pay the expenses and the receipts are submitted to VDOT for reimbursement. So, we are out the money from the beginning and we have to wait and hope that VDOT will pay us back. If anybody knows VDOT, and I do know people who work for VDOT, who know the inner workings, you're going to get stuck with the bag. So, I am opposed to it in the characterization that the trails have raised a million dollars. They have not. They have raised potentially $200,000 and $800,000 is a promise from VDOT will pay you back. I came from an engineering environment and I never met a project that came in on budget or under budget for that matter. So, I expect overruns and that means the county's going to be on the hook for that. The gentleman who did the engineering for RappTrails mentioned that the school connector portion was the simplest portion. That implies that the next five miles are not, which means more cost, harder work, more expense for the taxpayers. And finally, you know, I'm one of those hard-working, oh, am I over time? I'm sorry. I'm one of those hard-working Rappahannock residents.
Hi, so.
I work in the healthcare industry. I do not make a lot of money and I cannot shoulder the burden of extra cost. But again, I'm not opposed to the trail if it's privately funded, but taxpayer money, I don't believe, should be spent on it. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Dave. My name is Dave. I live in the village of Sperryville, wherever the district that is, who knows? Anyway, thank you for the few seconds that I have. I'm going to say something. I don't care if you build this trail, I don't care, whatever. Do I have to pay for it? No. I have too many bills. I don't make money. But what I do have is a company that deals with threat assessment. Has anybody figured that out? Has this gone to emergency, what is your thing, safety committee? Has anybody figured it out that if you want to get an ambulance down the trail a mile long to help someone, how long is that going to be? Do we have access? Does a fire truck have access? Does law enforcement have access? A mile long, six o'clock, just say you're allowed to be on the trail at six o'clock. Can you ask for help at six o'clock because we do not have cell service? Has any of these thoughts come to anybody's mind? I'm talking about the emergency service part of this. I'm talking about threat assessment. Middle of the night, who's going to be there? Is law enforcement going to have to hire more people to walk the trail to make sure the bad people are not coming to Rappahannock County? Because I can guarantee you that they are around you. I've worked EMS for 30 years. Everyone knows the major drug out there that we'd love to give you is Narcan. Why? If Madison County has a problem, if Culpeper County has a problem, and if Falkir County has a problem with drug overdoses, Rappahannock does not have it yet, but guess what? You're going to make a road to help that problem exist. Thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'd like to ask the Board, is there any member, he or she, that really believes that this thing is not a gamble?
What was your name, please?
James Mills. I'm from, I live in Cassleton, Stonewall District. Excuse me for forgetting that. Anyway, can I ask the Board the question again? No takers, huh? No takers. Mr. Curry just made a real good case that it is a gamble. Why would our Board of Supervisors gamble our tax dollars on something that the majority of the people in this county will not use? To the most of the people in the county, it's a waste. I got a name for the trail. We can call it the State Theater of Rappahannock County. Thank you all.
My name is Peggy Eubank. My name is Peggy Eubank. I live in the Piedmont District, but I also own property in the Hampton District. I am a retired person on a fixed income. I cannot afford additional taxes. I believe this plan has not been properly studied and I think that further work needs to be done. We do not want this bike trail. And I think also that it's a shame that the school districts were dragged into this mess. And I urge everyone to please go know for this bike trail. Thank you very much.
Yes, good evening. My name is Jim Warwick with Wakefield District. And what I'd like to talk about is not anything about his exercise healthy or anything like that, but the cost to the taxpayer. Like others who have spoken earlier, I don't really care if the trail was built or not as long as it's no taxpayer money. That's how it was sold to the Board of Supervisors in various planning commission and Board of Supervisors meetings. But then, on October 2nd, 2017, that changed entirely when the Board of Supervisors, three of the current members, voted to have the Rappahannock County taxpayer liable for all costs in excess of the grant. And that same clause is in tonight's resolution that you're going to consider voting on. And I don't understand at all how we made, how you all made a 180 turn from no cost to the taxpayers to voting on a resolution saying the taxpayers were liable for all costs, known and unknown, in excess of the grant. And in thinking about that, I'm the one that came up with the word, "What is the force behind this?" on RappNet. And the reason I said that was in thinking about how things changed so drastically about the funding of this on October 2nd and 3rd, 2017. I said, "There's got to be something that we, we, the citizens, just don't understand about the motivation for three supervisors, four at the time, to vote to have the taxpayers liable for all the money in excess of the grant." And the word "force" was the best I could come up with. I don't have any other explanation, except perhaps the three of you were not really paying very good attention to what you were voting on. So, that's all I have to say.
I'm Steph Ritter and I'm from the Wakefield District. And I support this path between the two schools. This path is 1.2 miles. I think some of you probably have driveways that are longer, and I'm going to guess you don't spend millions of dollars on it, either for maintenance or to establish it. Okay, to address a couple of the questions, the path is open to people to walk, bike, jog.
They have to drive, they have to walk.
Turn and interrupt, please. No inter, no conversation.
It is open. You can find a place and there will be parking available. One of the main reasons for this school connector trail was to have another exit from the schools other than 211. If, for instance, all the chemicals in the co-op suddenly exploded, you'd want to get the kids out some other way than 211. This path will provide you with that exit, which the school is required to have. So, in one sense, the taxpayer is actually saving money because RappTrails has raised the money, all the money, to meet this VDOT, to meet for the VDOT... the money, all the money, to meet this VDOT, to meet for the VDOT grant. And the idea is that the money raised by RAP Trails will be given to the board, to Mr. Curry, who will use that money that has already been raised to pay the bills, which will then be reimbursed by VDOT. And there's a 30-day cycle. In any case, if you've listened to what he'd said earlier today and at another time, you'd realize that the risk to the county is really very minimal. And therefore, the risk to the taxpayer is very minimal. If all works according to what I actually believe will happen, and I have no reason to think otherwise, the county will not be out any, any, any money except for the payment of Mr. Curry's time. Then the, the last thing is that it is on VDOT right-of-way as well as the county land. Doesn't, it doesn't cross through any private land. And so those who are worried about their driveways, I don't think need to be worried. And on the issue of how much the actual cost of the path is, Bowler Engineering is a reputable firm and has actually built these paths before. So the fact that they've given an estimate plus a 30% contingency should make you feel quite assured that we'll be able to build this 1.2-mile path within the amount that we've both raised and been granted. Thank you for your time.
I'm Tracy Isman. I'm actually a resident of Culpeper County, my own property in Jackson District. I'm a rural state taxpayer in that area. One big, I'm along all the way with the taxpayer money concept and everyone has addressed that issue. One of the issues that has not been addressed is a security issue and where the sheriff was and is to play a part in this. Our schools, from my memory of having my children here, now having my grandchildren, nieces and nephews in this school, it used to be open access to the schools. There was a parent who came in irate into the high school several years ago that resulted into us having these locked door concepts. When I come, when you come pick up your children, you push the button and you come into a holding foyer. And it is very much equivalent to when I visited, unfortunately, when I visited my sons in county jail and prison. The only thing that we're lacking that doesn't qualify our schools in lockdown from that parent and then from the suspicious person that was seen when the kids were placed on lockdown and could not leave the school. And the only thing we're missing is the barbed wire fence, the chain link barbed wire fence. We're missing that part. A public bike trail behind our school, being that we've implemented the securities that we have in this school from those two incidents that I'm aware of, it's only a matter of time for our children are playing in a prison playground. And that I'm not okay with. I do think and I do believe that a bike trail, a paved walking path for handicapped people, handicapped children at our park is an absolutely positively beautiful, lovely idea. And for that access, that eliminates the security issue for the school that we've already seen with parent in the county, or parents in the county, and whatever suspicious or non-suspicious person at the time when we were placed on lockdown. Thank you for your time and consideration of the no bike trail, school connector trail. Thank you.
J.B. Carter from Jackson District. I'm not against a bike trail. Everybody I think loves, send your need exercise in various forms or another. What I am against is my local and state taxpayer dollars paying for somebody else's wish list. There are plenty of volunteer building projects you can look at in Rappahannock County. Every volunteer fire department and rescue squad was built by those volunteers by raising the money to get the project done. And we're still doing it today. We're still buying every capital item using our own volunteer fundraising monies. You don't pay for fire trucks, you don't pay for stations. We pay for all of that. Okay? So I applaud you. Do a good thing, but keep going with it. Keep raising the money, okay? Get the project done on your own. Stewart's Field was built with all donations and all hard work from the citizens of Rappahannock County and Culpeper County. Milner Field for our young girls softball team, same thing. These were volunteer efforts. They raised the money, they got the project done with no county involvement, no state involvement. Again, again, the taxes that we do have need to be spent on projects that the county has kicked down the road. In 2008, we instituted 800 megahertz radio project for our emergency service providers, Sheriff's Department, Fire, and EMS. We were promised because we couldn't find a tower site in Rappahannock County. We don't have 100% coverage. Some of our deputies and even our fire and rescue people have to travel a quarter mile down the road to make a radio transmission back to dispatch. We need a tower in this county. We were promised one 10 years ago and we still haven't taken action on it yet. The new radio project that we've got going on with Culpeper, not going to improve our radio reception at all on 800 megahertz. It's just a replacement for an outdated system that we have already. The county office spaces, again, build a building where we can put everybody in the same building, okay? We've got rented spaces that don't meet our needs. Our county administrators on the second floor of a house. Where else does that happen in, anywhere in the state of Virginia? Leaking pipes, unsafe conditions, again, we've already talked about the fire at the courthouse, thank God it happened during the day. Shelters with no generator. This is an emergency shelter, but it has no generator and no facilities for keeping the power on for right now if we had an emergency. You can't even hook a generator up to the building. Again, new taxpayer dollars. Again, once this project is done, it's gonna be yours forever. You're gonna be paying maintenance on it and you're gonna be paying upkeep forever. All right? Again, what happens when RAP Trails and other organizations supporting this die out? They weren't here 10 years ago. Who says they're gonna be here 10 years from now? So who's gonna pay it then? You and I are gonna be paying it. VDOT projects, again, I'd like for them to fix some bridges so we can actually get fire trucks across the bridges to get to the town. Again, this is just the first mile. Where's your county millionaires? There's some people that can write a check for this project right now and not even bat an eyelash. Go to them. They, I'm sure they'll support you, you just gotta ask them. And as Dr. Luke says, for which of you desires to build anything does not first count the cost whether he has enough money to complete it. Thank you.
Hi, guys. My name's Henry Gorfine and I've lived in Rappahannock County for 43 years. I hear so much misinformation here. First of all, the grant, people say the grant should be used for other purposes. It cannot be used for other purposes. It is earmarked for that purpose by your state legislature. So when you say we're spending the money when we can be fixing the roads, it doesn't matter because what will happen if you turn that grant down, that money will go to another county. It's that simple, for the same purpose, for the same purpose, okay? Then I heard a gentleman talk about the high school and the lighting. Those ball fields have become an asset to this community. They're not a liability to this community. They're a place where people can go and see their kids play ball. There's a place where elderly people can go and enjoy watching a football game for five bucks or for nothing. It is not that it is a total liability, it actually is an asset. And I think people should look at this bike trail very much like it is an asset, not a liability. First of all, you can't get out of this school if something happened on 211. You can't. This connector strip, if you're a kid playing high school baseball, you either have to get in your car to get to your baseball field, or you have to take a bus, which costs money. We're the only high school probably in the state that kids have to get into a car to get to their, where they play ball. I also would like to ask the board, I know they can't answer questions, but if we were to turn down this grant, how would it affect our getting other grants? Would we become known as the county who was not interested in grant money? I don't know. Asking that question. I think that would put us pretty much back, my own feeling is, that would put us pretty much back on getting grants from any other, other government facilities. And the last thing I'm really disturbed by is this gentleman who got up and predicted and I've seen it, I don't do RAPNET, but heard that we can invite all kinds of pedophiles or people like that. If we were to take that attitude, why don't we close the park? I mean, they can hide there. Why don't we close Stewart Field? Why don't we close the grant stands? I mean, you know, and it'd be, this is, some people have been motivated by this by fear and it bothers me greatly that this was a Trojan horse, something that was just brought up and it doesn't mean anything. And as far as getting people in, help, that's another access, egress and access to the schools which they don't have. Right now, they only have one. And that's on the main highway. Thank you.
My name's Al Regnery. I live in the Hampton District. I'd like to second Mr. Gorfine's remarks concerning misinformation. Those of you who got up here today to talk against the bike pail, the trail largely spoke about things that are not correct. This trail will not cost taxpayers money. As Mr. Gorfine said, it's funded by a DOT grant. You can't use it for anything else, just like any other grant. It's earmarked for this particular thing. Now particularly, I wanna talk about the health benefits of this trail. Rappahannock County is an old county. Our mean age is 11 years older than it is in the rest of Virginia. We have a lot of senior citizens who need to get exercise. Bicycling, believe it or not, has been shown in studies to be categorically the best exercise for seniors. A recent study was done taking a group of 125 people between 55 and 79 who regularly bicycle against 125 people also healthy but who are sedentary. What they found was the bicyclists had a vastly increased system of immunity. The immunity system was much better, their muscles were better. As a result, they got sick much less often, they could walk better because of the movement of the legs together with the breathing and the other exercise you get on a bicycle. Basically, people in that age group were found to have considerably higher incidence of health, of not getting sick, and of actually living, considering to ride bicycles regularly are as healthy as people often who are in their 30s and their 40s who are not. So for this county with the aging people we have, if we could get this county built, this trail built, the initial section of course is the, is only the first section. If we build that, VDOT will be much more likely to fund the rest of it, the six-mile trail. That opens up all of these big circuits you can ride up Gibb Brown Hollow, Harris Hollow, down Rock Mills Road, all the others. There's probably 100 miles of back roads you could do and you can always come back to where you started. And one other point is, you've talked about the trail being closed at certain times. That's categorically not true. The trail will be open all the time. The only thing you can't do is park your cars in the school parking lot when the school is in session. So that again is total misinformation and you should disregard. Thank you.
My name is Nick Kingsland from Hampton District. Somebody was talking about a lot of the conjecture that goes around the fact that the county's not gonna be on the hook for any money here. Well, I've never heard so much conjecture as all the ways the county is gonna be on the hook, when it's really quite plainly stated in all the work that's been done on this, that this is overfunded practically by VDOT funding, by match private funding and everything else. The scenarios, in the worst-case scenario that was presented by the board, those risks are extremely unlikely, to put it mildly. I mean, that's something you have to consider as the most unlikely of scenarios in any project whatsoever. It doesn't mean it's gonna happen. It's exactly what it is. It's something that's very unlikely to happen. Now, you know, somebody mentioned the connection with other recreational amenities that we have. And one thing I've realized is that, you know, we're discussing this bike trail, multi-use trail, rather in isolation without any reference to other recreational amenities in the county. Take, for instance, the county park. Now, this was agreed to some 30 years ago it was created. And it's possibly, probably, the discussion had many of the issues being considered exactly the same as what we're debating here today. And for 30 years, it was funded without any county money. It's largely funded with other funds and for 30 years, it's been managed with extremely little burden on county fiscal resources. There is no reason why 30 years from now, the Rappahannock multi-use trail will not be seen in the same light as a great recreational asset in the county, except that in addition to recreational benefits, the trail would provide many ancillary benefits such as providing an emergency evacuation route for schools and a safe alternative to biking on country roads. Some have argued that such a trail is better suited to more densely populated areas, that in the words of one detractor on RAPNET, it's a cutesy suburban idea, ill-suited to a rural community like Rappahannock. Well, I don't think Rappahannock County will be the first rural community ever to have benefited from a multi-use trail. There is a good, long history of very rural communities, communities just as rural as Rappahannock benefiting from these multi-use trails around the country. You just have to go to southwest Virginia to see, to Washington County in Abingdon and look at how the trails there. Anyway, this project is financially sound and it seems that most of the arguments against it are based on wild exaggerations of liability and cost overrun risks that, you know, are just extremely unrealistic.
My name is Sal Abate and I am with the Jackson District. You know, I've only been here a few years, but I cannot, cannot imagine how this place is run. I am embarrassed to be in an area that's not thinking about the progression of the entire community. You people need to understand that things are gonna go forward whether or not you're here or not. And you're not gonna be here very long. All of us are gonna be gone. So you have to think a little more progressively. I know it's hard for you to understand that because you've lived here all your life. But if you understand it in a different way, you would come to understand that there's a reason why we spent all this time devoted to trying to get this trail passed. It's for you, it's not for anyone else. There's no money to be made and that's all I have to say.
Good evening, Board of Supervisors. Good evening, Board of Supervisors. My name is Tac Takalaski. I'm a resident in the Piedmont District. I don't envy you. You're in a situation of having a million dollars being presented to you and have to decide whether or not to accept it or to reject it. A question was asked, what will happen in 15 years when RAP Trails isn't around and the guarantee that the VDOT has expires after 15 years? And the answer to the question, whether or not RAP Trails is around, if you accept this money and we go forward with the bike trail, then Rappahannock will have a bike trail in 15 years. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Savannah Hensley. I'm from the Sonot District. And I'd just like to point out, I wrote the note in my hand because I wasn't prepared that it was dragged here. I was dragged here. I ended up listening. And people keep mentioning that the kids can use it. And I've been in the school my whole life, and I have been outside for gym maybe once. We don't go outside, I'm sorry. And especially like now, it's too hot for that. And it's very unrealistic. And, sorry. There is no good way to watch the kids on a trail like that. But I came to address something else. So this is supposed to be a connected trail in case something happens at the school. I grew up watching TV shows of men that do bad things, women that do bad things. And if I were a sadistic person, I would have some commotion in the school to put the kids out on the trail. But I would have people there waiting on the trail to pick off those kids. And me being a kid myself, that concerns me. I wouldn't want to go out on that trail and be vulnerable, be vulnerable, and be open and be defensive. And I know our great law enforcement, we have great law enforcement in this county, but we don't have enough to man a trail like that and to cover every option and every potential outcome that could happen. I think a trail would be a lovely idea. I use these trails, but I think, Mr. Van Acker mentioned it earlier, a trail in the park would be amazing. That would be great. I feel security is just not, not, not working. And we want, we want something to keep the kids in the county. If we're going to potentially put our necks out for something, we want to do it now keep kids here, and now bring kids here, and now have them grow up here and have great memories here, and to live here and raise their kids here. But I'm sorry, a bike trail will not do that. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Supervisors. Excuse me. My name is John Jackman. And, you hear me okay? And I'm in the Stonewall Hawthorne District. A lot of the comments and opposition to this concept and this trail seem to treat it like we're the first ones in the country to think about doing this. And actually, we're one of the very last, if not the last county in Virginia with a I'd like to read you a very short excerpt from our comprehensive plan. This is not a new concept for the county either. In our comprehensive plan, we state that one of the goals is to have multiple modes of transportation which will be available to residents, including pedestrians, community buses, trains, and bike routes. Then we have under the regional planning part of it, that we will, the planning will be initiated for the long term, looking at employing trains and buses for commuters and expanding options for pedestrians and for cyclists. Now, this is how, about 14 years old, I think. So it's not a new concept for Rappahannock. It's not a new concept for anybody around us. As has been pointed out, if we don't accept this grant, it will go to one of our neighbors. There were 40 grants awarded this past year under this program by VDOT totaling about $39 million. In most communities, the taxpayer does pay because they want to, because the matching funds by most counties come out of the county budget, because they want that as a benefit to their citizens and to get used. Now, in our case, we didn't think that citizens of Rappahannock would want the county to budget this 20% match out of its tax revenues. So we found a way to raise funds through other foundations and through many, many generous private donors. So, can we take 30 seconds to just say that everybody's been saying we need money for our buildings, for our schools, whatever? Well, get off your duffs and go get a grant like we did, and do some good. Thank you.
We're in Castleton. We've been property owners out here for 30 years. Been coming out here all my life. When I first started coming out here, I could walk and I could hike, and it must hadn't taken a huge toll on me. Now I can't do that. I can't even take my scooter in my driveway. So for me to have a place to go, you know, to get on a paved bike path, I can't even do that in the Shinnon Dome Mountains. There's 1.3 mile trail, but it's gravel, and guess what? My scooter doesn't work on that. So I think that having a trail for those of us who would like to get out, who would like to enjoy that, is awesome. I know a lot of people have said that handicap people wouldn't use it. Well, here's one that would. And also, I used to be a Montessori teacher, but I can still do that. I think that outdoor education is a large part of the Montessori curriculum. I think our schools, if they had a safe place to go out and do that, would definitely do that. We took our kids for walks all the time. We did all kinds of things with people. And lastly, I just want to say, it's hard to believe that people don't want to accept this money. And, you know, help bring jobs to our county, the jobs to build the road, the jobs to maintain it, bring tourists in. Six miles gets done. Bring revenue into the stores in the county and the restaurants. Thank you.
I live in Jackson District. I think it's wonderful for people to get exercise, and I agree, probably biking is one of the most wonderful ways to get exercise. But my concern is, is the percentage of people that will get exercise on this trail, and I know this lady right here would like to be able to do that, and I'm sad. But the point is that I think we're going to have a very few percentage of people in this county use that trail. And if it's going to cost us money down the road, and let me just say this, I've been in business for 40 years. I build landscape projects, I do things, I've run the broadband business here. And I heard the gentleman who was the engineer say expectation. I heard Mr. Curry talk about moderate potential overruns or worst-case scenarios. What that tells me as a businessperson is they don't have a clue. They don't know how much money it's going to cost. Now, there's one gentleman here that said something about an endowment. If the people that want this bike trail take the money out of their pocket and put it in this thing and have them fund it, and have the money there to take care of it for however long it has to take care of, I'm okay with that. But I will tell you, being in business for 40 years, I've never done a project, and I have expectations that this project is going to be successful and I'm going to make money. But guess what? Every time, not hardly one time ever in the projects I've done 40 years, and we do a lot of them, hasn't ever come out the way I thought it was going to. Always made less money. Now, that came out of my pocket. But if this thing costs more money, then it's going to come out of our pockets. And I know there's a lot of folks in this county can't afford a whole lot more taxes. I can't, I don't want them. If that happens, I'm moving. So I don't want to do that. I love this county. It's beautiful. I've got a great place. So I would encourage the board to reconsider and don't vote on it at this time until we're absolutely 100% guaranteed that it's not going to cost us one dime. And as far as the people exercising, if y'all can't find a place to exercise in this county, then you ought to live someplace else.
Paige Glenny, Jackson District. Board members, this decision is actually really simple. The first thing that you have to decide is, do you believe the cost estimate? If you believe the cost estimate, what RappTrails is saying is exactly right. They've got the money. But listen to what the engineer said. Listen, look at his report. There are ways this thing can grow. All right? So the question is, do you, first question is, do you believe the cost estimate? My years of experience in overseeing acquisition is, no, not on this level of engineering. That's my own personal opinion. All right? Second, if you think it's going to go over money, what do you think the probability is of RappTrails finding that money? They haven't, they haven't banked any more money since then. They could have solved this problem by getting another big chunk of money of private donations and increase the 30% or 15% or whichever margin we're playing with today to 50%. It's as simple as that. Do you believe those numbers? If you don't believe them, then you are putting the cost on the taxpayer, pure and simple. And that's what everyone objects to. They don't object to having a bike trail. They don't object to having a place to exercise. I don't object. I don't care. As you've heard time and time again, make sure we are indemnified. We don't want a gentleman's agreement that, "I'll try my hardest to find some money." All right? And if I don't, then we'll cancel it, and then there'll be clawback. That's not what they want to hear. People would, please, let these people go out and get some more money. I mean, I have issues how much will be used, but hey, I'm not going to use it, but if they aren't charging us money, if we're not going to have to pay, go for it. It's as simple as that. Do you believe the estimate? And if you don't, do you believe they can raise the extra money? Those are the two things to make your decision by. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jessica Jenkins. I'm from the Hampton District. I am 29 years old in Holden, and I've lived here all my life. Born and raised here. I used to live in Castleton with my parents, and my dad took me to the top of a hill, put me on a bike, and said pedal. And that's how I learned to ride a bike. I taught Wyatt how my son ought to ride a bike, who's now eight years old and can ride. That's how I'm going to teach my daughter to ride a bike. I'm not going to take her to a bike trail where I have to be around strangers and people I don't know and everything like that. I just don't trust that scenario. I know that you go to the park, and it's a choice that you make to take your child to the park. And if there's someone there you don't like, I go onto the park sometimes and I'm like, "Oh, that car looks sketchy. Let's just go home." I don't feel like you should connect our schools where my precious babies are, where they go every single day to school, and let creeps and weirdos and people be on those trails near my child. And as a taxpayer, I feel like I have that right to send my child there and then be safe. And I don't feel like if you connect the schools and let random people walk on them and let random people do whatever they want on those trails, that my baby's safe. I don't feel like people should be walking around behind our schools and doing god knows what, whether they're riding a bike, whether high school students sneak off back there, god knows what goes on. I don't feel like that's safe. And I'm not even concerned about, I mean, I've got it, we pay a lot of taxes in this county, that's not even my number one concern. It's the safety that my child, I do not feel that my child is safe there. I do not feel that my child and his teacher and his classroom can walk down the side of 211 safely to make it to this outdoor classroom or whatever they feel like is going to happen back there in this woods. And I don't feel like that it's safe that people are going to the dump and throwing trash away, and then there's a bike trail right there where my child could be on or classroom, which he'll never be, so it doesn't matter. But I don't feel that it is a safe choice for us as a county. If you want to walk on a bike trail, head up Blue River Mountain, go to Blue River Greenway. There's a beautiful bike trail over there. It's 15 minutes, I could probably do it in 10. Go over there and ride your bike, walk, do whatever you want to do over there. We do not need a bike trail. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Nita Cluess. Hi, I'm Ms. Jane. Many of you know me as the sometimes ungrateful moderator of Facebook RappNet. You've kept me quite busy to the board. This issue has lit us up more than the election did in the county. We don't allow national politics on Facebook RappNet, but anything local's fair game. And this issue has been more posts, more interactions outside of the normal people who post than anything else that I've dealt with in the years that I've been admin. I've had to lock down more posts, do more policing. And needless to say, a lot of the points I have tonight have already been covered, but there are a few issues that were brought up. I have some notes here I'd like to go down. The gentleman before me had mentioned about belief, and do we believe in what's here? Do we believe in what's here? There was an issue brought up about that earlier. And one of the points I wanted to cover is, you know, we are not about, and when I say "we," I'm talking about a collective consciousness of what I've seen going on back and forth on both sides. Nobody's against fitness. I've lost over 100 pounds. Activity rules, okay? Nobody's against that. Nobody here is an idiot and thinks that grant money can be put somewhere else. Everybody knows it's earmarked for a specific purpose. Everybody also knows that there's liabilities and risks that come with it, okay? That's what people are against here. They're not against saying, "Okay, that'd be great if this grant played out and VDOT played out and everything went like it was supposed to." But my background in land use law in northern Virginia, as a come here, not a born here, can tell you, yeah, things go over. Things happen. That's what it is. My issue is, do you believe, do you believe somebody that went into RappNet and put a bunch of answers and had a great conversation with the community to go in and delete those You never did answer. You never did say why you deleted them. If you had nothing to hide and you believe in what you're doing, why can't you have a conversation with the community and stand by what you say and put in writing? That's my issue. I'll back up what I put on the keyboard. I'll tell it to your face, and I'll have the facts backing up when I speak. Don't come in this room and talk down to the people. Don't tell them that they're not progressive. They're very progressive. They're very protective of the community. And I give my hats off to you guys for going out and getting the grant money and doing it. Please, we need more people like this in the community. We need people that go out, that can write and, you know, put in applications for grants. Help our fire departments. Help our parks. Help Ruth with everything she's trying to do for the park system. People here have great ideas. I don't want my tax money, I don't want my relatives over in Washington or Castleton, their tax money on the hook for this. We're not there yet. When we have parks and recreation and all our other ducks in a row and everything else is taken care of, I'm so freaking loopy. I would love to be able to ride between the villages on a trail, but not on my diamond. And not with somebody's hands.
My name's George Lee. I'm from the Hampton District. And I'm definitely not for this bike trail at all. And like my daughter just said up here earlier, I did put And like my daughter just said up here earlier, I did push her down the hill. That's how she rode. And I didn't see nothing wrong with that. She learned. We didn't have no bike trail back then. When my bike trail was my driveway. And if I wanted to ride my bike, you know what my dad and mom and Tom would say? Get on that tractor, boy, go flip the hay fields off it. I didn't have no bike. Didn't have no bike back then. You don't need no bike trail. And what I don't understand is, I don't, I've never seen a map of this thing, where it's going to, where it's coming from. But I know if it's connected with elementary school to the high school. I know we got a bad intersection there at 622 Rock Hills Road. It's bad. And I hate to say this, but I work at BDOT right here. And because I know a lot of people are probably against BDOT, but you know, I work there. No problem. But every day, we have trucks come in there. We have asphalt trucks come in there. The dump comes in there. The recycling trucks come in there. I mean, we've got, that's the busiest intersection of the whole county. And that's where we're putting the bike trail entrance to go across to the schools. They don't want that. I think, and just like everybody else said in here, the park down there, that's, put, put something around the park. You already got flat land there. You could go around the park a couple times. Let it walk there. What section? We need it. No, I need it. Well, we do not need a bike trail out here to talk these two schools around. And it's just like emergency, um, thing when, when something happens at schools. Have you seen on TV when something happens to the schools? When they let their kids out of their school door? There are common. There are 1,800 different ways. They're not in a single file. They're everywhere. It, it's just going to be hard to keep up with these kids on this bike trail. And as of right now, I'm against it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dave Conick from Stonewall District. Uh, I want to talk about two things. The first is, I've heard all these different proponents of the bike trail, especially Mr. Jackaman and some of the others. Some of the others talking about, there's no way it's going to be a cost overrun. The contingency fund is going to cover everything. It's all in the plan. The engineer, who is not, may, may not be the engineer of the actual project, but who did the preliminary work, it's all covered. Mr. Curry's got it all figured out. It's all covered. And I want to ask a very simple question, not only to the board, but to those people. If it's, if you're so sure that those numbers are going to hold up, and if you're so sure that if they don't hold up, you're going to be able to raise the additional money, why don't you do what I said last October? It's very simple and it won't cost hardly anything. It won't cost $50. Go over here to the bank. Jason's right, Brady's right in the back. He'll set you up with whoever you've got to be set up with. Get yourself an irrevocable letter of credit, which for those of you who aren't lawyers and so forth, although this one lady surprised me how smart she was and knew what a memorandum of understanding is, it's nothing. It's, it's not worth this piece of paper. Anyway, get a letter of credit. It's a guarantee. It's a promise by the bank that is backed up by either land or a cash deposit or something. It's like backed up by the people who get it, namely Raptrails, now that they're incorporated. And it guarantees the payment of the design, of the admin cost, of any possible cost overruns, and of the maintenance in the future. And if they can't raise the money, if there's cost to the taxpayers, that would insulate and indemnify the county taxpayers 100%. Any cost overruns and also the bridge money to pay out and then, no bank, no, no bank will give you money for 30 or 60 days without charging you. Why should the county taxpayers? But now, since my time is running out and I don't want to be like Bill Fletcher, I want to address my supervisor, Chris Parish. Chris, you promised and promised and promised at this table, at that table, at the courthouse, you sent out a flyer last year and said, honesty is the best policy. Didn't you? You wrote a letter to the Rapannic News the day after election and said, I'm not for this thing if any tax dollars are going to be used. Well, how much time has Curry got in it already? Tax dollars are already being used and they're going to be used. So if honesty is the best policy, Chris, then do what you said for once in your life. Настуришь, все ему удалось без смелости. Вот правильно сказал.
Hi, my name is Marlena Lee and I'm from the Hampton District. And I just want to start this speech out the same way I start every speech whenever I talk. I love, love, love Rapannic County the way it is. I, I understand that when we get a bike trail, that brings other things behind it. When we get a Dollar General, that's going to bring subdivisions behind it. When we get a McDonald's or any of those things, there are other things coming behind it. And I'm sorry, but I love our county. I'm born and raised here. And I don't want to separate us into people who've come here or been here or left here. We are all here and we should all love our county. And I want our county to stay what it is now because that's what we are. We are Rapannic. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Amy Saxton Wayland and I reside in the Piedmont District on Lee Highway between Water Street and the high school. I do not support the creation of this trail. The main reason is because of the possibility of taxpayers' money being used. Another reason is if this trail comes to its full fruition from village to village, from Water Street to our county's park, this trail will run directly in front of my home, devaluing my home and land. This is quite concerning and this is not a wild exaggeration. I am disheartened by those who have negatively criticized those who are opposed to the trail. They have inferred that the naysayers of the trail are against the promotion of wellness for our youth and elderly of this great county. I have been in education for 26 years. 25 of those years here in our county. Since I've begun my career, I've always had the best interest for children in my heart. My husband, Billy Wayland, a lifelong resident, 76 years, of our county and a full-time farmer, are also, he is also opposed to this trail. He was unable to come here tonight as he was still in the field working hard for our money when I left for this meeting. Lastly, I am a city girl, a come here, residing in Rapannic by choice. If I desired urban-type amenities like the trail, I would reside somewhere else. Thank you for your consideration of my thoughts and your time.
Hi, I'm Cliff Miller from the Piedmont District. Uh, I was sitting here tonight, um, trying to rack my mind as to why a huge group of people would want to reject what appears to be a fully funded recreational trail. As my fiancee in the back will attest to, empathy is probably not my strong suit, but it's important to me to figure out why there's so much anger out there. I, I run the Headmasters Pub in Sperryville and got a, got a taste of it the other day. Some of our best employees are Rapannic high students. And one of them walked out into the parking lot to a minivan full of adults smoking cigarettes. And I, I got really angry. And it was, I, I think a result of the fact that I had no control over it. And I, I, it gave me a taste for what it's like to be in a situation where you can't do anything about it and feel like there's, you know, in this case, there was an enormous risk to this employee. I know the dangers of secondhand smoke. It just made me mad and, and I'm, I'm starting to get it. I think in this case, 20 years ago, people might have said, smoking's glamorous. It's, it's a good thing to do around your kids. It'll, it'll make you more attractive and help you find a mate. We now know that's maybe not so true. I, I think in, in this case, there's a lot of theater and, and there's also a lot of fact. And I, I think we maybe have gotten them confused a little bit. And, and, and these, these guys up here are the minivan drivers. And, and I think they're going to have to figure out, you know, whether, whether they're lighting up or, or asking people to put out the cigarettes when the younger people jump in the minivan. Uh, it's scary. I, I understand that. I, I get that. I, I think you've, you've got some, some experts in the room who've, who've given you pretty good information. You've also got a school board who's firmly behind it. And I think it's good. I, I can't tell you what decision to make. I, I can tell you that I'm beginning to understand maybe, maybe some of the anger and, you know, I, I hope you'll give it a second look.
My name is Forrest Orton and I'm from the Jackson District. And I'm from Hampton as well. And I'd just like to go on the record tonight as I'm against the vote. I, I would vote no. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bill Chikelman. I live in Harris Hollow. I think that's Hampton. We spend millions, literally millions of dollars every year keeping our streets safe for cars. Good thing. I spend a lot of my taxes on streets that you drive on. I'm never going to drive on those streets. What do I get out of it? What do you get out of the taxes that you paid for me to drive on my streets? Nothing. What you're not doing is making a place safe for people to walk. You can walk, drive your cars all over the place. You can run people over, off the road, whatever you want. You don't care about the people on the, on the street who want to just walk around safely. Not one penny. Not one penny to people walking safely. But millions, millions to plow these roads, to pave them, to make new ones. You are so cheap, I can't believe it.
I think I'll just turn around and leave. My name is Mike Mahoney and I'm from the Hampton District. My understanding of the project is that the county does not sign the application for the grant until such time as Raptrails puts up the money first. That is, they will be starting with money in the bank. I believe also, and on this I'm uncertain, that the initial design contract can be written in such a way that you should have very good estimates of what the costs are likely to be, far beyond what the initial estimates were. And if you can do this within the amount of funds that Raptrails will have put up, which means that if at the point, costs are beyond what you think are reasonable, you can terminate at no cost to the county and at a dead loss to Raptrails. They will be the ones that will put out the money and gotten nothing. Now, there are lots of reasons to be against the trail. Lots of folks have very strong feelings. I suspect that many of the arguments you've heard are motivated more by the opposition than the opposition is motivated by the arguments. So I ask you to do this. Imagine a few years hence. Trail is complete, but the county has not spent any money or Gary's money has, salaries been paid a little bit, tight a little bit. A lot of time he spends on other things, his brother, I'm basically. Very little county money. A million dollar enhancement to the county. Benefits to those people who use it. Now ask yourself, who will be hurt? Who will be losing? What will be foregone? I can tell you, I think unless the benefits will far, far outweigh any cost to any of you who are there. Thank you.
Would you like to take a 10-minute recess? Stretch your legs? Stretch my leg.
I'll do my best.
Like you all, maybe back to order?
My name is Walt Wong here in Hampton District. I wanted to address what I think is a safety issue in the area of the trail starting at the Flatwoods. You may remember at the Public Harrying for building the Flatwoods station, that there was concern about bear population there.
In here?
That, that, that area of the trail near the Flatwoods is a, was said to be a magnet for black bear. And I think if, if you go to Flatwood, you can see the damage that's done as bear, bears climb over the fence there. And if anything, probably the, the population of bear in that, that area is, is much higher than it is today. Uh, it is, is today than it has been in the past. Simply because they climb in and out of those carts there. You know, I don't think anybody would send their children to play in an area that was infested with rattlesnakes. Considering the, the population of bear there, having children walking down the street, down the trailer or on a bicycle or somebody in a scooter or wheelchair passing through the area and passing between a mother and her bear cubs really puts them at danger. So I, I, I hope you will consider doing, doing some sort of study, either with the game commission or just with the people who live there to, to figure out how, how bad it's going to be. If, whether or not you're, you're really endangering the, the people there who might be using the trail. Old timers also have, have told stories about that road. And this, this affects the building of the trail there. There's a story about a man with a team of horses in a wagon, uh, going out on that road with the Beckwood property, that area. And how, uh, the whole team of horses and the wagon and the man on top of it sank like quicksand into the ground, um, in that area. And they, they couldn't get the horses out. They had to shoot the horses because they couldn't get the horses out of the mud. They, they couldn't get the wagon out. Horses in the wagon are probably still buried in that area. They ditched, throw a rope to the man on top of the wagon and pulled him out. But there isn't, there is an area back there on, on that road that you're talking about building a trail on that is prone to that kind of activity. You know, it's, it's almost like quicksand. It's, it's sort of a mud sand situation. And that's going to, I don't know how you fix that, but it's, it's a real problem that I don't think anybody's considered.
Uh, I have one scenario that I want to ask the board. I have been told that the trail is not gonna come in front of my house, which I live right past the high school, probably the closest house to the main road. When VDOT put the four, uh, four lane in, they did not buy any property from me, they just used their existing right away, that's probably only about, I don't know, 20 or 25 feet from the edge of the road to my property. And like I said, I've been told it's not gonna come in front of my property, but that was fine. But the thing I want to say is, and I'll use numbers that I can understand, say, they get into this project on the corridor behind, uh, coming up Flatwood, and it's supposed to gonna cost $10. Well, they get into it, it's gonna cost $20. That's twice as much, whatever the figure might be. To make it cheaper and easier way to go, why not come right up to 11, which is gonna be right in front of my house? I understand it's gonna happen, but it could happen. And if that is the case, it does happen, then they gonna be riding in my driveway.
That's right.
And people talking about riding bicycles in the driveway, well, that's fine, I ride my bicycle in the driveway, but I don't want other people riding. Say it's not gonna happen, there were school kids, which is fine, I don't really have anything against that, they riding bicycles, and I happened to look out my window, and they coming up in my driveway, going out the other side, because I have a two-part driveway. But I didn't really say anything, because it was just children, and children will be children. But I guess my concern is, that if it doesn't work behind, are they going in front of me? Thank you.
I'm Lieutenant, Lieutenant Nolan, I'm in Pea Monde. Just wanted to make a brief comment about that. Just a brief comment about the comprehensive plan, which the gentleman talked about a while back. I thought that was pretty important, and when you're talking about the financial implications of the bike trail. I think it's, it's wise also to think about the future of the county, where it's headed, where, where, so, so where we think it will be in five or 10 years, and that's why I support the trail. Thank you.
My name is Carol Levine, and I was born and raised here, been here 59 years. And I have a lot of friends that are for this, I have a lot of friends that are not for it. Uh, I learned a lot tonight, I wanted to kind of keep an open mind. Uh, but I do think that this needs to be really looked at by you all very carefully, because I have experienced a lot of things in my time, where when they're not really studied, and the after effects happen, there's no turning back. And Mr. Torrey over here made a really good point. When I went to the dark skies last week, I thought, God, what a great place for a bike trail. Um, I mean, that's perfect. Uh, it doesn't, friends don't, anyone. Uh, I was part of the school years ago that started that park, and it's doing very well now, and it's still exceeding. And I think that this bike trail, um, there's a lot of concerns for me with safety, um, just a lot of things. And I've learned a lot tonight on more of what I'm against than for what I'm for. So I think you all really need to think through this before you make a decision. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Deirdre Payne from Castleton, Virginia. Chris is my supervisor. And instead of reiterating a whole bunch of stuff that I'm against the bike trail, I've always been against the bike trail, this is Rappahannock, it is unique, it is so precious to all of us, don't ruin it. We have nice, slow, even growth. We have a wonderful place. One gentleman said, uh, we are the last county to put in a bike trail. God save us. Isn't that one? We do not want... I chase cows, but we just want a living like we got it. Don't do this. Please, God, don't do this. Think about it.
Evening, you all. I spoke this afternoon, so I'm back again, because I have a different body at this time. Um, I'm speaking briefly in support of the bike trail.
Morning.
Actually, can you hear me? Actually, technically...
Could you give your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Sheila Gressinger, Hampton District. Technically, the project in discussion is a school connector phase. According to the school superintendent, the schools have been seeking funds for their evacuation plan and had been unable to secure them. So that need dovetailed with the proposed trail plan. As a tax, as to taxpayers' money and risk assessment, I think some have confused the two. The current project has covered its requirement basis with built-in safeguards and funding already in place. There's no such thing as a guaranteed no risk, and I think Mr. Curry provided a good explanation at the last board supervisors meeting last month. For those who state tax dollar needs, I, I appreciate that 100%, but I want them to put their thinking caps on and figure out ways to increase the tax income. That's what we need. Instead of saying, we don't want this, we, we, we don't want to be taxed, no, of course you don't want to be taxed, but let's put it a different way, a different twist to our way of thinking, and say, how can we figure out how to get a better tax increase in, without raising our taxes? What the plan is, encouraging new businesses to grow and thrive. Saying you can't do something because we need to fill in the blank, leads to stagnation, which eventually kills an area. Instead, research and create a way to resolve and address it, whether it's a grant, or a group decide to put their money where their mouth is, and, and raising some funds, as residents have done successfully for a long time. Nobody wants their, their taxes increased, but that's part of the, the critical situation that we have in our county, is that things, taxes do increase for one thing or another, so we need a way to be able to figure out how to get a better tax base. That's in your businesses. It's not real estate taxes, because you can't tax people to death, and, and we don't want to do that. Anyway, a quick example of, of people raising money for something that can go on. There was no solution to the feral cat population, a lot of people said, until a couple, a couple came along with rap cats, and now there's for the cats' sake. Both brilliant, what I call pedal to the metal suggestions and, and solutions for something, and can-do attitudes. I think as a county, we can come together and we can do a lot of things. I think this bike trail, and I, I really don't like listening to it being called that, it's a, it's a school connector. It's a specific area that the school has needed and has not been able to, to get the funds, and this group Rap Trails has come up with that solution, and so it's gonna benefit all of us. Sorry, we're over.
Hello, I'm Angelo Cello, I live in the Pea Monde District. Uh, my house is literally right next door to the school, so I probably have a bigger take in this than most of you, because, um, when they extend it to the other five miles, it's gonna run right either behind or in front of my house. We're not sure which way yet. Um, I've been told that it's gonna go behind the house, probably 30 or 40 times, but when I spoke to their engineering firm a few months ago, the gentleman point-blank told me he had no idea where it was going. Um, he said it would go behind the house, but I could go in front of the house. And then I asked him, I said, well, have you walked the trail? And he said, what do you mean? And I said, well, there is, um, I'm a little concerned about how the emergency vehicles are gonna get back here, specifically to clean the roads. And he said, well, what's your concern? And I said, well, there's two bridges behind my house that are probably over 100 years old. How are their emergency vehicles gonna cross that? And he said, you have two bridges behind your house? Does he have justice, say, when you're gonna cross the trail through? You haven't looked yet? Couple other quick points, I don't want to use up all my time. Um, I have a 12 and a 14-year-old, um, little girl. Most of the room probably know who they are. Am I gonna let them walk down the middle of a trail? Probably not. Not unless I'm with them or their mother's with them. Um, basically, that's all I had to say. Uh, I'm completely against a trail, and, um, I, I really hope you guys do the smart thing tonight. This will be the third time I've been in front of you to ask you not to build it, and I'm hoping this is the last time I have to come and do this. Thank you.
Anybody else care to speak? Anyone else care to speak?
Roger, I agree, yes. I'm Burnett Tru, I'm Burnett Truworthy, and I live in Mr. Parrish's district, Stonewall. I've only been here 40 years. Can you hear me back? Okay. I'm Burnett Truworthy, I live in the Stonewall district, I've only been here 40 years. But in the last couple of years, our county has spent a lot of money on legal fees that I think have been totally uncalled for, unnecessary, and not a good use of funds, not the best way to use them. But gentlemen and ladies, your hands have been tied, you've had to spend the money. With the fiduciary responsibility that you have to the citizens of this county, please think very carefully about how you spend any money.
Anyone else care to speak?
Do we get to speak a second time? You can have mine.
Yes, we can. Here, Nick. If you want to speak again, just please come down and line up behind the voting.
Jane Whitfield, Jackson District. Um, and thanks for allowing me to speak here again. Um, as has been my custom now, in the three or four times that we've done this, I want to respond to a few of the issues, um, that have come up. Um, I do want to reiterate, well, first, I want to thank everybody for coming. Uh, this has been a terrible experience for me. I've never been called so many names, accused of lying, accused of not being honest. Uh, you know, I think I've been called Trail Jane, I've been told to go back to California. I mean, it's been a really harrowing experience. I've had my own supervisor, and basically call me a liar. It's been very difficult. Um, I didn't really sign on for that when I had my grandchildren here three years ago, um, wanting to, uh, go on a walk, and I have a small piece of property, and I didn't have anywhere to take them. Instead, I started talking to people, and I found out that there had been two efforts to have this sort of trail, um, in the past, and they hadn't been able to find the funding. Well, it just so happens fundraising is my business, so I went about finding the funding. And for that, I want to just once again clarify for people that we already have 1.1 million dollars. Not only have we raised the money to cover the budget, it's a budget, for the engineering plan that has a 30%, 30% buffer, which is quite large. Um, we've also raised another $30,000 already in advance for the maintenance fund, and we've raised about $20,000 in addition to that, um, which will be available for the project as things come along. I also want to give some good news. I think last time I shared that, um, Judy Hope had committed $20,000 to provide a nature walk in the portion behind the school. We also just got a gift from, uh, gift commitment from John Anderson, who has also said that when the trail is built, he would like to donate bikes for the citizens, for the young children of the county, and would like to finance a bike drive when that happens. I told him he had to work with the county and the schools on that, but I think John is someone who grew up here, as are many of the people part of this project. In fact, of the original 14 people in the project, seven of them were born and raised here. So it is a false statement to think that this is some kind of been here, come here. Um, it's true, I've only been here for a few years, I was raised in Northern California in a similar environment, but, um, this project idea has been around for 30 years. Um, I want to make it clear that we have every intention of continuing to fundraise, and in that, I like to say, um, we were gonna have a fundraiser on October 20th, but the date has been changed to November 10th. Please mark your calendars. That'll be a family fun walk and ride, um, that will be, uh, from the, um, corner of Rock Mills Road down to Headmaster's Pub, and then a longer, um, path. So we're following the, uh, park, uh, model, where we will have an annual fundraiser like this every year, uh, to raise funds for maintenance in addition to the $30,000 that we've already set up. Um, I think this is a, a good project. I don't envy, uh, you guys having this set up there, and, and really multiple times here, two points of view. Um, but I think it's something that is worth the effort, and that we have mitigated the risk as much as any project I've ever seen. We've raised 1.1 million dollars in advance before the thing even gets started. So I hope you will support the trail. I hope you'll make a difficult, but, uh, decision that's good for the county. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Sharon Propper. I voted Sperryville, not sure what district there it is, but I just, during the break, heard that the trail's possibly, um, going along the VDOT fence line, and round behind Aunt Speaker. Is that correct?
They probably don't know.
Okay, my sister's house is right there, so either you're gonna have to move the fence over, or you're gonna be right up against her house. So, what, I mean, that's really tight there, because those guys harass her while she's there cleaning the fence line, because it's right on her property line. So they harass her constantly, because she's cleaning her fence line. So you'll have, um, trail right against her. And yes, the bears are in her yard every night, every night.
Um, I've been up here once, but, um, the bear subject, like I said, I live on Flat, 70 Flatwood Lane, um, there are an abundance of bears, um, and all kinds of other wildlife, deer, foxes, I mean, we have it all. Um, but there is a lot of bears. Um, I myself will not walk, you know, my own driveway at night because of it. Um, so I don't feel that it would be safe for anybody else. Um, and again, my driveway will be butt right up next to it. It, you know, is coming up, correct me if I'm wrong, because I still haven't, you know, been fully clear on this situation, um, but it is coming up through, you're turning down Rock Mills on the Flatwood Road, correct?
No.
Okay, so you all don't even know?
No, they don't.
Okay. And yes, it is. I may, I may not be an expert, but, um, along my driveway, whether it is raining or it is a drought, it is wet. Um, you know, we see the effects of it all the time. And, and our driveway is private, it is not VDOT-owned. Um, you know, so, I mean, we do have an easement through VDOT, we have a 30-foot easement, but, um, you know, we do see it. Um, and, you know, that's not to mention, you know, I don't say anything, because I really don't mind it, but I do think that they should be educated on it, is we already have the, you know, athletes at the Rappahannock County High School running down our driveway. You know, my husband comes in in a big old, you know, T-300 Kenworth mechanics truck, and we have a 90-degree turn in our driveway. If we come around there and we hit...
Um, but it is coming up through, you're turning down Rock Mills on the Flatwood Road, correct?
No.
Okay, so you all don't even know?
No, they don't.
Okay.
Across the wetlands.
Okay, and yes, it is. I may, I may not be an expert, but, um, along my driveway, whether it is raining or it is a drought, it is wet. Um, you know, we see the effects of it all the time. And, and our driveway is private. It is not VDOT owned. Um, you know, so, I mean, we do have an easement through VDOT. We have a 30-foot easement. But, um, you know, we do see it. Um, and, you know, that's not to mention, you know, I don't say anything because I really don't mind it, but I do think that they should be educated on it. Is we already have the, you know, athletes at the Rappahannock County High School running down our driveway. You know, my husband comes in in a big old, you know, T-300 Kenworth mechanics truck, and we have a 90-degree turn in our driveway. If we come around there and we hit them, we're liable, even though it's a private drive. Okay, so we're already having to look out for these people. You put in this trail and they're going to, oh, look, another one. You know, it's a, it's a extra path for us. They're going to be led straight to our house. You know, it's extra people that we have to look out for. And I, I, I think, I mean, out of the thousands of dollars that, you know, people pay for, you know, their property, there was other people here that have stated, you know, you're going to be crossing their driveway. You know, I, I think that we shouldn't have to do that. Um, I grew up on a 100-acre farm. I'm from Front Royal. Uh, my husband's from here. But, um, I've seen what any type of development can do. You know, any type of increase in taxes or anything like that. Um, the 100-acre farm that I grew up on, you had, my parents would sell, you know, oh, we're going to sell five acres to, you know, pay for the rest so that we can, you know, pay the taxes on the rest. Do you know what is on the spot that I got married? A house. That 100-acre farm that I grew up on is now a housing development. And it's somewhere that was absolutely beautiful like Rappahannock. Okay, so when you're, you're putting this in, starting with a school connector trail, you're taking it six miles, you're opening up the welcome mat for anything else. We choose to be here. We want to be here. But we don't want, I mean, yes, we do need to grow in some ways. But developmentally wise, no, we don't want that.
Hi, Stephanie Cole, Jackson District, again. Um, there are a couple of things that I wanted to point out after having a discussion with my friends back there. She and I are on the opposite side of this issue, but we love each other anyway. Um, this county is small enough, and I want to reiterate to everyone that we're small enough that we're, we can be like a family. Yeah, we're going to disagree on some things, but honestly, from the most part, what I've heard here tonight is that there are more things in common with each other and our views on this trail than there are opposites, oppositions and things against it. I think that a lot of people who have objected to the trail as it was presented said they're not really opposed to a trail. I think we're all okay with that. None of us hates children, none of us hates elderly, none of us hates disabled. Um, but I, I believe that because there are so many of us here that, uh, have lower incomes. There are, of course, the wealthier people who can afford this. But many, many of these projects that I've heard spoken about tonight in the county were done with monies gained by fundraising and donations. I don't see why, if that's, if, if the funding that you, Jane, have, have, uh,
That's what we did.
Have done, if that's honestly the truth, I think that the only, there is only one obstacle preventing this, um, project from moving forward. And that would be a guarantee to the taxpayers that we are not going to be liable for. If that's all it takes, honestly, if that's all it takes is your signature on a form to move the project forward, to say that you're not going to be on hook, why are you opposed to it?
Exactly.
Would you sign it? If someone presented you with a document now, would you sign the form? We've, the, the county is mistrust, you know, a lot of people in this county don't trust people who say, trust me. Because people in the past have said, trust me, and we've been burned.
Yep.
And, you know, we want to trust people, honestly, we do.
That's right.
But, you know, gun shy people, I mean, it's hard to trust when you've been burned before. And I realize that you've fundraised and you've gotten money to start the project, but really, I feel like signing something that's legally binding is the only thing that's in your way.
Catherine Mader, Piedmont District. Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I too have been very stressed over all of the comments that I have read on RappNet. That people who are against the trail are against the children. They're against the health of the children. They're not for seeing Rappahannock grow. That is so wrong. I stand here before you. I am passionate about the children of our county. My husband and I do a lot for the children in our county, in the county where he works in Culpeper, and the county where I work in Madison. So this has nothing to do with the children. And if it is all 100% paid for and it does not cost the taxpayers any money, which I doubt, the thing is, what happens once the trail is built? Has, does anybody have a VDOT site plan that it's safe for these children and walkers to walk across Rock Mill Road where they're going to walk? I use our landfill. I see what the traffic is like on that road. It is very dangerous. The other thing I ask, if the trail should happen to go through, isn't the majority of the land Rappahannock County owned property? Who is liable for an accident happening on the path? There's black ice, there are leaves on the path, and someone trips and falls. Who is actually ultimately liable for injuries on the pathway? Can you answer that question for me? Is it Rappahannock County property? Are we liable? Can we lease the property back to them for a dollar and make them liable and carry the insurance plan on this? The other thing I have is maintenance, 15 years, $30,000? Even if you collect $50,000? Has a study been done for what it costs for these types of pathways in other counties? Do we have that information?
I, I got to talk here. It's, it's closer to $15,000 for your home tree.
I would say so. I am on the Sperryville Cemetery Committee, and we pay over $6,000 a year for mowing. And we have volunteers that go in there every month and do something. But we're talking about 365 days a year. We're talking about ice. We're talking about snow removal. We're talking about cleaning the pathways and making sure they're safe. At the last meeting, I was told that the sheriff was going to prepare something about the safety and how the EMS department and the, um, sheriff's department was going to be able to respond and monitor the trail. Do we have that information? Is it safe? Because the bike path has been sold to us that it is safe. It's a safe place to bike. It's a safe place for our kids. It's been sold to us that it's going to bring tourism to the county. And I don't see how 1.2 miles, if we can't get that off the ground, is going to bring tourism and tax money to the county. That's all.
I'm Tori Van Aker from Castleton, back again. I, first of all, want to congratulate RappTrails for all the effort in doing the fundraising, going through all the troubles of, uh, making applications for grants. I've been through that process and it's a real pain in the royal rear end. So hats off to you for doing that. However, if anybody knows me, they know that I'm a stickler for detail and I want to get to the bottom of something. And I think that I have said something earlier which I was contradicted on, and I would like to have RappTrails clarify this one point for me. I personally believe, based on the information that I currently have that has revealed to me that this trail will be a limited access, limited use trail. Yes, the trail will be open all the time, but the parking will not. So therefore, if the parking's not available, then the trail is not. And if that section of the trail is not available, then the whole six-mile stretch is bottlenecked. So let's find out what the truth is about the access protocol because frankly, people will want to use the trail during the middle of the day, especially on a nice fall, autumn, days that we will get here and in the springtime. Thank you.
Hi, Nina Cluse again. Uh, Quinn Hill, me too. I was asked earlier to just make a quick clarity statement about the RappNet issue. Uh, we're talking about Facebook RappNet. And what I was trying to say earlier is, you know, we understand the difference between fear mongering and fundraising. Okay? Uh, we're not afraid so much that VDOT's going to hold up money. We know that can happen, right? We're not in opposition, um, to having trails per se. But I think what the consensus has been is the opposition is being on the hook for trails we're not ready for yet. And we're talking about fear mongering versus financial mongering, really, is what it comes down to. And somebody earlier with RappTrails was talking about integrity and quoting people from RappNet, uh, both Facebook RappNet and the actual listserv where anything goes. The Facebook RappNet posts that I mentioned earlier that were deleted by Jane herself had to deal with parking, had to deal with conjecture, had to deal with the misinformation. And now they're not there. And they're gone. And unfortunately, as somebody said, unlikely doesn't mean that it's non-existent. It just means it's unlikely. And, um, you know, if you love to quote RappNet, love to delete your own words, no one could quote you. I'll tell you to your face, where's the integrity? Where's the answers? Can we have it in writing? Can we have the commentary to back it up? I think that's everything I covered. Um, there's a reason we were the last county. We don't have the budget, we don't have the population.
We don't want it.
And it's not about accepting free money. It's about accepting the risk and the liabilities that come with the Pandora's Box of unknown and sketchy behaviors.
No bike trail.
Hi, uh, I think offline again. Um, first of all, I, it's been an education. Um, I've seen Mr. Conan kick off his 19, 2021 campaign for supervisor at this meeting. But the thing that bothers me the most is that people are here mostly concerned about their taxes. And it's about time these people understood, and I think the supervisors understand this, that we have a completely unsustainable economic model in this county. We have no income. People who think farming is the way to go. I farmed for 15 years. I didn't make a nickel. When I took, when I took my land out, I paid back taxes on it because I had been in land use. You know, but this economic model here is unsustainable. Every year, it gets tougher and tougher. Every year, your taxes go up and up. So you have to look for other avenues of revenue. And if they complete the six-point, whatever miles it is, and I would like to see it longer, I believe that would bring in tourist money. I believe people would stay here. I think they would go to the many restaurants and spend money. And it would help every party here who is paying taxes because there would be other sources of revenue. There is no revenue flow in this county. It's all on basis on people's property. And it seems to me that we should be susceptible to ideas that may help to grow revenue. Thank you.
Paige Glynn, Jackson District. I'm a little confused. On October 2nd, you approved a resolution that made you the sponsor of this program, this project. Why is RappTrails or Jane or their engineer answering questions? This is a county public works project. If you all don't understand it, we have a problem. The only thing left for RappTrails to do is get an irrevocable letter of credit or an endowment or whatever you want to call it, then make sure that they cover any potential cost overruns and maintenance. You can all pick whatever number you want to, but that's it. She was just up there nodding her head, no, she won't sign the document. Really? Come on.
Rebecca Smith from the Piedmont District. And I just wanted to read to you all, um, something about the appeal of Rappahannock County. Um, and I'll just let it talk for itself. We, the people of Rappahannock County, declare it to be a scenic county. And all goals, principles, and policies will reflect and evolve from this fundamental recognition. That is written as the Rappahannock County Comprehensive Plan. It goes on to say, "The county has shown through careful land management that its residents care for the land, its flora and fauna, and its historic legacy. We strive to preserve this legacy, to conserve the county's resources, and to maintain a balance with nature by not encouraging growths." It also goes on to say, "Ill-considered development can undermine this economic base as well as degrade the qualities of the county that make it so attractive to its residents." That's right. Now, I don't know what you all consider, um, ill-considered development, but RappTrails is the definition of ill-considered development, in my opinion. And I would also like to say that for you people that are bike enthusiasts, that you're going to load your bike on the back of your vehicle, you're going to come to one of two parking lots that don't exist yet, and go take your bikes off and go 1.2 miles back and forth? Really? I don't think that's going to happen. I would love to see you all go drive to Fuck Here, go drive to Page County, go drive to Culpeper, get in your mileage there on your bike, and then come back here. Because we don't need it, we don't want it, and we shouldn't have it.
We can't afford it.
So three times tonight, gentlemen, three times at least, and this makes four, people have asked Jane and her group, if you believe your engineer, it's your engineer, not the county's engineer, if you believe that estimate or guess estimate, because that's all it is, read it. It says right in there, don't rely on this, it's just a guess. If you believe that's the right number, you believe you've got all the money. So there's no risk to put up the letter of credit. Why won't you do it? There's a reason they won't do it, and the reason's obvious. Even a blind man could see it. They don't believe, they can read their own engineering report. They don't believe that number, and they don't believe they can raise the money. They've had a thing on GoFundMe for two months or so. They've raised $300, and 200 or 250 of it was from people that are in the group. John Jackman or Steph Ritter, some of these other rich people who are behind this. Cliff Miller, who's going to make money off it when the trail ends at his establishment. Let them sign a letter of credit and get, get the risk off us. Look at your memorandum of understanding, which even though it's not worth the paper it's written on because it's not a binding document. It's only a memorandum of understanding. It was written by a lawyer hired by Jane and company. It was not written by the county lawyer. The county doesn't have a lawyer that is competent, with all due respect to Mr. Dobbs, that can document a complex, multi-party transaction like this. He has no experience in doing that, with all due respect. Why don't you hire your own lawyer? They hired a guy who's a partner in a Washington DC firm that specializes in this kind of stuff. And he wrote the memorandum of understanding. Mr. Curry submitted him one that had a provision for a letter of credit, but it was taken out by the lawyer. And Mr. Curry now tells me, and this is what he told me last week when we had this discussion, that, well, it was taken out because they weren't sure RappTrails would agree to it. Well, who cares what RappTrails will agree to? If they won't agree to it, then that's the end. The memorandum is exactly backwards. The memorandum that we're seeing is exactly backwards. It takes all the risk away from RappTrails and puts it all, not on you, on us. And that's wrong. If they want to build it, let them take the risk. Let them put up the letter of credit. And if the cost estimate comes in too high, let them back out of the project and make sure their letter of sure their letter of credit covers all the possible money that'll be clawed back. And if, like Mr. Curry says, maybe they'll get more funding because that happened inside the county...
Time's up!
Maybe, 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 great. Let their letter of credit, that's what it does, cover all those risks and all that expense.
Quiet. You can have my credence, too.
I would oppose it, except for the safety factor at Rock Mills Road. See ya.
No bike trail.
Come on, he said you go, come on.
Everybody, everybody.
I'd like to just clarify something. The jury is being asked.
You owe me your three, hold tight, come on. Thank you both.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's...
Mr. Chairman, can I just clarify one sentence?
We're going to talk three times, we need to allow everyone to talk.
Well, I guess I can't tell if I'm the applicant or if I'm supposed to be in charge of the thing or if I'm no one from the county, but I can tell you this. That MOU was not drafted by any attorney or Rapp Trails, and we have not hired any attorney. The attorney that is working with us and the county collaboratively is a resident of Sperryville who has two children who wanted to participate in the project because he believes in it. And the MOU was written by Gary and myself primarily and reviewed by Art and the attorney, and it contains every single provision that we were asked to include. Everything. There is not one thing that we did not include that we were asked to include. So I just want to be sure...
There's still not...
I want to be sure that everybody here understands that we, as a team and as a group in this partnership for whatever it is, are working collaboratively together and that Gary, Curry, the board, the attorneys, we've all been trying to work it together, and it was not an attorney or our attorney that drafted that MOU. And Mr. Conick, if you would have taken two minutes to ask me that question, I could have clarified that for you.
I don't need to ask you any questions. That's all the documentation.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, we're not having conversation.
No bike trail.
I think the biggest problem here, Mr. Chairman, is 11 months ago, this board in this very room voted to be the sponsor of this project, and we still, this board as a body, does not know what it's got itself into. And that's why most people are mad. This board, if it was going to vote for something like that, it should have taken the bull by the horns, as they say, Mr. Paris. But you like me, you don't have a bull with horns right now.
I'm only one.
Yeah, well, you know what that's like. But that's the biggest problem. And, you know, we throw out all this stuff about it's good for tourism. I ran the tourism numbers, you know? It's not very hard to run tourism numbers. You have sales tax, we get 1.3 cents of the sales tax. And then if it's the mail's tax, we get 4 cents. So if you provide for every increase in sales that would both qualify as a mail's tax and a sales tax, we need $2.9 million in new sales every year just to pay the maintenance cost on the 1.2 mile.
Exactly.
You can run the numbers. I ran it, and I was staggered, and I ran it past people that are a little bit smarter than me, and they said, "Your numbers are good." So that means if you were to build the 5.9 miles to bring in these tourists, you're up to $17 million worth of sales, sales tax. That's why we don't get much money from sales and mail's and log's and tax. We get some, but it's not a lot. And you can't generate that kind of sales unless you do something really, really crazy and start looking like Pigeon Forge. And then that type of development has its own costs, so it's a never-ending battle. And these are the things that we don't get out there and say because this board as a body doesn't understand it, because we let it just drift along for a year, and Rapp Trails didn't work. And if, Mr. Curry, is this correct, that the MOU was written with what y'all wanted in it?
Happy to speak to that. So the MOU was founded on the MOU that I shared with the board early on that was used in another locality.
Right, but of course, we never voted on anything as a board. I'm trying to make a point here, though. I just want to get a little bit of clarification. How did you get any instruction that we did not want a irrevocable letter of credit?
So happy to clear up the irrevocable letter of credit as well. The model MOU that was used in the other locality used the letter of credit solely to cover the long-term maintenance cost. It did not cover any other capital cost or design cost overruns of the project. That locality's MOU included the letter of credit for the long-term maintenance cost.
But there's not enough money here for long-term maintenance.
In this case, Rapp Trails indicated an interest to provide cash rather than a letter of credit for the maintenance cost. So as I've explained, I think to the board and others, we would rather Rapp Trails provide cash to us to rest in our bank account than rest in their bank account with us having the legal opportunity to go get it through a letter of credit. Now, if the board is of a mind to say this project could only go forward with a letter of credit that covered the cost of design and construction, you can do that. And you can say that you're only willing to go forward if that's included in an MOU or some other contractual document, and it takes two parties to form an agreement. And if the other party is willing to accept that, then it goes forward. If they're not, then it doesn't.
Those are the types of things we should have been talking to the public about, and we have not. That responsibility was on us, and we didn't do it. Not one of us did it. Not one of us, you know, as a body. We didn't put the motion forward, we didn't instruct staff. And $30,000, if you go back and look at the tape from 11 months ago in this room, it was October, actually, it was October 3rd, 12:15, and I asked this board not to vote on it at that late an hour, but y'all did it anyway. And if you look, they were offering us $30,000 for five years of maintenance, $6,000 a year, and that seemed fairly reasonable at the time. I didn't question that. But since talking with people that work in Falk here, that work on these trails, and they have it all written down, and it's, you know, $20 an hour for a part-time person, so many, it's like 20 minutes per mile, so many miles, and it figures up, they got it all figured up. They got like almost $8,000 for regular maintenance. Then they prorate the pavement at $7,500 a year for the 10-year life. So they repay the amount, $75,000 every 10 years. We don't have that kind of money. So now, they've only got $30,000. They've only always had $30,000, by the appearance of it, because they offered us 30 a year ago for five years maintenance. Now they're offering us $30,000 for 15 years maintenance. It doesn't work. It's not going to work. We're looking at maybe two years maintenance, and there's not enough sales tax that would be generated by anybody coming to this county just to write a little 1.2 miles. None of the numbers work. So with that, gentlemen, so that we can move on to the other things that we've got on the agenda, I would like to put forth a motion that we instruct staff to work with Rapp Trails to develop an MOU that has a irrevocable letter of credit that would cover any cost overruns that are associated with design, construction, and maintenance costs. And let them and the bank, Jason's not here now, but I imagine they've got people between, our county attorney, I think, can help, you know, work on that, and somebody at the bank, but we can come up with something that would... If this trail's such a good idea, it should be built. If it's not a good idea, it shouldn't be built. But the taxpayers here, the majority of the taxpayers here tonight, said they didn't want to be saddled with the debt. The calls and emails to my house are two to one opposed to it. I had only one that said they were for the trail, but they didn't want the taxpayer to be responsible for any of the costs. And I put that in the form of a motion that we instruct staff to work with Rapp Trails and whoever, our attorney and their attorney, to develop an irrevocable letter of credit that would cover all cost overruns associated with construction, well, first off, design, construction, and maintenance for 15 years. I'll second it.
Is there a dollar amount attached to this?
I don't know what it is because it hasn't been designed. So I'm saying if they work it out with the bank, if the bank says, well, it's a 1.2 million, I mean, 1.2 mile at $1 million, and you got to have X, Y, Z, they know the formula.
Discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I think everybody up here knows that that's going to kill it. We have asked Rapp Trails whether or not, we've asked them that question. We know the answer to that question. We've been told. It's, the answer's no. That's belts and suspenders. Nobody is, you know, they're not, they're not a corporation that's set up, a multimillion-dollar corporation that's set up with a lot of funds where they can just go down to the bank and take out a letter of credit. All the conversation here about all these fancy millionaires that want this and fund this, it's, you know, it's not a corporation, so that's not there. So this, I don't want to say that this is a disingenuous motion, but I think this board needs to understand that the motion on the floor is basically to kill it here.
Yes. Do it.
Well, this was, because we've asked them the question and we know the answer.
When did we ask them the question?
I think, I think...
Excuse me, we have a motion on the floor.
And I have the chair, and I have the floor, Mr. Chairman. I mean, we're an hour and nine here since we started out here, including going three rounds with the champ here at the 2 o'clock session. So we're all tired. But, you know, this started out with a group of people that I think really wanted to put forward an idea that was going to improve their community. And, you know, some people have said thank you for that. I applaud it as well. I mean, I thanked them, too. I looked at it. When I looked at it back in October, I mean, this has always, to me, been the school connector trail. Didn't hear from the superintendent tonight, but we've heard from her a couple of times. The schools are very much behind this, very much behind this, and the school board is behind this. They would like to see this 1.2 miles, which is all we're considering here tonight, happen. We didn't hear from any businesses tonight. Heard from a couple, but the businesses that I've talked to, they think this is good for their business. And I know some people don't want to have more tourism, and they don't think it's going to create a lot of revenue, but the businesses that I've spoken to have been, you know, mostly in favor of it. I've heard a lot of people tonight say, "Hey, I'm fundamentally not opposed to this." And then, of course, go on to talk about needing this irrevocable letter of credit. I wonder, I mean, you could, okay. We've got a lot of people that say they're fundamentally not opposed if we can figure it out. I'm not ready to, from my personal perspective, I'm not ready to kill this yet. I could pull the plug at any time. I'm close, but I'm not there. This MOU, say what you want about it, whether it's enforceable or not, has numerous exits out of it, including the first one in the design phase, you know, when we talk about the worst-case scenario being $136,000. I would certainly, if this thing ever went forward, propose that we take a look at that a lot sooner than when we got to $136,000, and maybe Rapp Trails can give us an MOU for 50 grand. I don't know for what it would cost, or at least get out of the box and see if this might make some sense. There's a bunch of ways that we can pull the plug on this. I hear a lot of fear, I hear a lot of fear out here tonight. And I don't think Rappahannock is a county that's afraid. I really don't. I wish we had more of a spirit that when citizens come forward with an idea like this and go through the work and get the grant, that we could work a little bit closer with them rather than just killing it in the cradle. But I hear a lot of killing it in the cradle tonight. And we got a motion in the second that effectively kills it. So I just wanted to get my thoughts in here before we took a vote on this, because I would, I think when this thing goes away tonight, it just goes away.
So if, I, first of all, I want to say that the engineer for Bowler, Jonathan Ritchie, is married to my niece. He's a really good guy with lots of integrity. I didn't, I knew he was an engineer, and I knew he worked in Warrington, but I didn't know, never heard of Bowler in all, never knew anything about it until the work was all completed, so, anyway. And in my subsequent conversation with him here in the last few days, he goes all over the state of Virginia, does Walmarts and all kinds of stuff. He says whenever they do something like this, they always exaggerate the cost of these things because if you underbid it and it goes over, then, you know, you're in trouble. But if you overbid it and it goes under, then it looks good. So I'm confident that the cost estimate is good, and I'm also confident that they would probably raise the extra money in the event that there was some kind of overage. I do want to point out that so far, because it is true, when it was presented to me, this project, that it was going to be free to the taxpayer, and it is true that I said that I would not support it, that it would cost the taxpayer any money. And it's also true to this point that it has not cost the taxpayer any money. Yes, it has cost some time in the county administrator's office, but they're on salary, they're on salary, and it has not cost the taxpayer any money.
If it takes your house, it's just house.
I'll carry about that before the meeting. And there has, up to now, has been no cost to the taxpayer. So, you know, the wetlands, I asked Ritchie about the wetlands. He gave me a map and also walked in. I didn't see any wetlands. I know what they look like. I've got wetlands on my farm. And I don't see any wetlands, and there's none on this, on this geographic map. What's it called? Yes, I'm concerned about the crossing the road there at Rock Mills. The county does have insurance for liability if there happened to be an accident there. No, it's not a bike trail. Nobody's going to come out and unload the bike to ride a mile, and I don't think it's going to do anything for tourism. It is going to connect the schools for various purposes, just so they can be fit, the track team, the evacuation thing. And I would really, I'd really hate to see a situation where we turn this grant down and let the money go somewhere else, and then we ended up in a situation where we all had to pay for it through the school budget. I don't say that's going to happen, but I would hate to see us do this and then turn around and actually pay taxes for the, you know, for this inter-school connector trail. So, and, yeah, I would certainly insist that the maintenance would be raised to $50,000. And I don't really, I don't really see why the Rapp Trails couldn't get an irrevocable letter of credit. I used to deal with those when I exported dairy cattle down to Costa Rica, and that's what I had, a letter of credit. And I put in all the documentation after the cattle were delivered, and then I got the money from the bank. I mean, yeah, it's a whole lot better if they, you know, gave me the money ahead of time and I had it in my bank account collecting interest, which is what Rapp Trails is saying they're going to do, then, you know, that would, you know, it's a lot nicer to have the money upfront, which is what they've offered. So I may be a little confused on this, but, you know, the, and it may be that, it may be that we, tell you what, you know, I really had hoped to get it over with tonight. I'm shocked, and with all the devices meant from the county, you know, it's not worth it, you know, it's not worth that the county be divided like this. You know, it's a lot of things, most, everything that everybody said I've agreed with, you know, I'm not sure. you know, I'm not sure, you know, what it's going to look like or any of this. I don't, I don't talk to sheriff, the sheriff county about this. We both agreed that the benefits for the safety of the schoolchildren in event of emergency would cancel any possible, outweigh or cancel any possible random danger that we would have on, on the trail, which could happen anywhere, you know, anybody's driveway, any road in the county, it could happen anywhere, something could go wrong. So, I don't know, when it was first presented to me, it, it was a, to me, it was a way to promote community and, and exercise, and then once, you know, this, the, once I realized, I guess there's already, I mean, there's already, there could be a, a lot of things that happened, you know, a tornado or, or they tear the road up, and, and I know that I'd already heard that there was an incident where they could have used the trail, it was there when it was, had to evacuate the elementary school, and the highway was closed down, and they could have marched over to the other school, parents couldn't come picking up, couldn't come pick them up, and they also, I was standing there in the cold until it resolved. So, it would have come in handy there. So, I am going to, you know, stick to my commitment that it wouldn't cost the taxpayer any money. I think it's extremely unlikely with this scenario, especially if they would come up to the $50,000 for the maintenance, that it would be safe. So, I'd like to ask, is the requirement, is the requirement for an irrevocable letter of credit, is that absolutely, is that absolutely killing the budget?
So, I, I think only Rapp Trans College can speak to that as the other side of the agreement. I don't know. Jane is there?
Do you want to speak, sir?
You have a question?
Yeah, I would like to know.
So, the, the question of the irrevocable letter of credit, what that would require, because we aren't a corporation and we don't have any assets, would be that we actually raise, I don't know, I mean, spend $2 million, we've had all kinds of numbers put out, that we raise those funds in advance and that we put them somewhere and hold them. As I've said before, all of the money that we raise is for the county. So, whatever money we have, that's for this particular project, we're just going to give you. So, we don't have a million dollars or $2 million in extra cash.
Neither do we.
We raised 1.1 million dollars to cover what was a very conservative budget, and we have agreed to continue to raise funds. Someone would like to say we haven't raised any funds, that's not true. So, we are continuing to raise funds, we're having our annual, first annual fundraiser in November, and we will be reapplying for another PATH Foundation grant, their deadline is in November. They fully intend to continue to support the projects that Rapp Trails is putting forth, and particularly this one, it's our only project right now. But we absolutely cannot and will not sign a letter of credit for, you know, hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars. Not only is that not necessary or needed, but we don't, we don't have the ability to do that. So, we could go to $50,000 for the maintenance fund. I think our thinking there was because we did significant research on maintenance and found that $2,000 a year is the average. That's also what's budgeted at Loray, for the Loray Greenway. And we have the school's community service program, and we have a volunteer program that, that would be a good baseline, and then we would continue to have this fundraiser every year where we estimate we'll raise about $4,000 or $5,000, which is what the county park does, and that that would supplement, you know, whatever we needed to do. So, from my years in fundraising, project development, I feel like this is a reasonable, in fact, you know, very well-funded, in advance project, but, you know, that's where we stand.
So, Dr. Grimsley, if you don't mind, the, I know that this trail's been kicked around in the past for the school, and is it a possibility that the school would end up building something like this with, with school budget money that the taxpayer would end up paying for?
There's a possibility, only if the board had it as a budget priority during budget time, and without my board having that ability to say, I don't want to speak for them, but if it was a budget priority, then that's what we would research. At this time, it's not. But if, if it were to become a board priority in budget making, then that would be looked at, not as to say that we could find a way to do that, but we've been sticking to our guns to keep our school budget as conservative as possible and keep our priorities aligned with our goals and our comprehensive plan, and as our plan to continue to do that.
So, has it come up as a topic of conversation within the board, your board, in the past?
In the past, as a board, since I've been on the, as superintendent, only my second year, it hasn't come across other than the Rapp Trails project. However, I have been on grant writing teams before that had tried to connect certain parts of the school because of the issue of security, being able to evacuate students from one campus to another because the other is the only other structure close enough to house that many people in the event of an emergency. And it gives you additional options. Is it a requirement? It's not a requirement. So, I keep hearing that too, and it, it is not a requirement, it's just added options to our crisis management planning. When you have more options, you have the better ability to keep more people safe in a better manner. So, that's why that's been pursued in the past, and the funds were never able to be raised, because it is a significant cost to do that.
So, it's not a requirement?
No, ma'am.
What we're doing, it doesn't conclude, anybody from fundraising privately, it just, it just gives the county taxpayers the ability to not be putting up their front, it's their, their honor, if you will, to, to back this thing that many of us don't want. I mean, if PATH, if the PATH Foundation is willing to give $150,000, maybe this thing can be built low-key, lower key, with local contractors, but the program as, as proposed is not local contractors. So, do you have anything to add, John?
I do. So, I have a solution that I want to present to the board that may ease some of the concerns, using Mr. Curry's risk analysis. I know it's a little late, so try to follow me, please, with the numbers, but-
But wait, we had a motion.
We have a motion.
I know, but we're, we are in the process of discussion, we need to make an educated vote, and so we give, what information-
You have to change the-
I'd like to add something to it.
You don't want everybody else to talk?
So, there's a, there's a, there's a solution, but I'm acting on behalf of the applicant.
Closer than that.
She is the applicant, the candidate.
Yeah.
Rapp Trails is no longer.
The county's the applicant, what are we, I'm confused what we're here for then.
So, we, everybody here is, because this thing is backwards.
Okay. So, if the, if the maximum clawback ability in Mr. Curry's risk analysis, $134,000, at the point, worst case scenario, where you could pull out of the project, based on the cost analysis, you would only need to spend 90 of the $205,000 engineering fees. So, the $134,000 of Mr. Gary's is, worst case scenario, is from an engineering fee standpoint. Only 100,000 of that will need to be spent to lower the 30% contingency down to probably 10 or 15%. The combination of those two would completely cover the $134,732. We got a motion.
Could you repeat the motion, please, Ron?
The motion was that we table this thing and give Rapp Trails time to develop an irrevocable letter of credit that would cover any cost overruns for design, engineering, I think this is the first time I said engineering, but it's the same thing, design, construction, and maintenance, that's not covered by grant monies. Now, they can find more grant monies. So, would you amend, in that case, would you amend that to where either an irrevocable letter of credit or other such means proves that it will not cost the taxpayer any money? Well, some sort of a bond, but it would have to be a surety, some sort of surety, some sort of, some sort of proof that it- A legal, a legal binding document that is a surety.
Would you be willing to add to that motion that there be a safety assessment done by all the sheriff's office and the local emergency services folks as well? Because I do feel like that's, that's missing in what we've been presenting this evening. It's, you know, if it's, to be using as an evacuation plan, then those details need to be in place.
I, I certainly would amend it, but I don't, I think to be fair to the sheriff, she's going to have a difficult time, anybody on her staff, anybody in that position, to come up with a safety assessment based on something as nebulous. And that, that was my discussion with her the past two weeks, I've had two discussions about it. She really doesn't know how to address it, because she doesn't know what she's talking about. That's how backwards this whole thing is. It's never been assessed by our public safety committee, it's never been assessed by the planning commission. The planning commission would have picked up on that intersection. That intersection at 55 mile an hour highway speeds is going to require a stoplight with a pedestrian crossing. Nobody else has got, nobody else has a 55 mile an hour speed limit highway with a trail beside it. There's, there's no trail running along 29 between Palm Pepper and Warrington, there's no trail running from, from, you know, Warrington to Gainesville, there's, there's no highway, highway speeds of 55 mile an hour that has a trail beside it.
I think the capital trail along the five is 55 miles an hour.
So, I'd like to know, what, what dollar amount are we talking about?
Well, I said we can't develop a dollar amount, because number one, no design work has been done.
Well, we're going to have to get an irrevocable-
The bank would, the bank-
How much is that going to be for?
The bank would be able to work with that. We don't know. I don't know.
Well, you're proposing something that you don't know the amount for.
No.
How is that different than this whole trail?
They have to quiet down.
Property.
Us or somebody else?
Yep. There's too many holes. Us is this property.
They, they can develop.
It's right there, house is right there.
So, there's nothing. So, we have a motion, and we have a second. Or some other type of surety. Any more to discuss? All those who say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion carries.
I think she pays her taxes, and that property comes right there, less than that close to the fence where they're putting the house. She pays her taxes. What are you going to do about her house?
So, we have two more items on the agenda for tonight, and I trust they will be round there quick.
I would make the way to my son or not, I would put up many signs. I would go along with the whole darn county and put up signs.
The next item on your agenda is to review and consider special exception 180504. This public hearing was opened at your last meeting and was recessed to this meeting. So, this is an opportunity to continue that public hearing. The item's regarding risk and strategic management's outdoor training facility on Surgeon Lane. It would be appropriate to reopen the public hearing and then hear from any citizens who didn't have an opportunity to speak at the last meeting. Michelle Summers is here, if there's any other information you need to provide, Michelle?
On board docs, there was an agreement between the landowners and the applicant on the road maintenance agreement, which is visible on the screen. The adjoining, I've heard from the adjoining property owners, if these conditions are made part of the special exception permit, then they are okay with the granting of the permit itself. And the applicant is here, if you have any questions for him.
Do you want to hear from the applicant before you reconvene the public hearing, or do you want to hear from the citizens first, then close the public hearing, and then hear from the applicant?
Why are we here for the citizens? That we can address any concerns or questions.
Is there any citizens here that would like to speak to the public hearing for special exception 180504 for risk and strategic management? Now's your opportunity to speak at the podium. Doesn't appear that any are interested in speaking, so with that, Mr. Cherry, close the public hearing.
Public hearing, close. Mr. Chairman?
Close.
I had some, excuse me, I'm sorry, you can't hear me down here. I had some contact with the property owner, since this is in Jackson District, and they said they probably wouldn't be here because of this last agreement letter with RSN and Mr. Blythe. So, they're not here.
Would you have anything that you want to add? I mean, you've spent all this time, you got to say something.
Exactly, yeah, but I'll only take up three hours of your time, so, only three, yeah. No, we've met with Bill Anderson, a lovely chap, and I believe that most of the neighbors, if not all of them, are happy. I think their requests were absolutely reasonable, want to be good neighbors with them as well. I'd, I'd like to also offer that we will directly contribute to the economy here. We will be buying food and other stores and resources here. We've also just launched a, something called the Master Instructor School Securing Program that is, has an international qualification, as we've endorsed by Virginia Schools Authority, DC Schools, and North Carolina, and we're offering it to schools here for free. It's worth about $9,000 a place, and each school in Rappahannock can have two places for free. So, we want to be good, I don't have a phone answer, I apologize, I'm trying to learn American, I'm bred in a hot doo-doo dog, so I'll throw some American slang in there. But we do want to be good neighbors, and we do want to contribute both economically but also more on the softer side to help out with school security as well where we can. So, hopefully, we'll be here for a long time helping out. I'm happy to answer your questions.
Actually, I don't have any, it's the planning commission, he worked, worked up an agreement with the neighborhood, and then there's conditions. So, unless anybody else on the board has any questions, I would put forward approval of this in the form of a motion.
So, there's one, one question that I believe was outstanding at the last meeting, and that was the planning commission forwarded this with several conditions, one of which was two days per month training, and I believe the applicant was seeking three days, and that was something that was under discussion. I just want to make sure that's clear in whatever motion is made.
That, that's, that's in the letter.
Oh, it is, sorry, thank you.
Yeah, so it would be the conditions with the letter.
So, it is, three days and number three.
They, they said we could do it for 30 days a month, yes. So, check, three days.
So, in your approval, make sure you recognize the distinct, the conflict between the recommendation, recommended conditions passed forward by the commission, which are on the screen, and the agreement letter, which will also be a condition, and that they're now conflicting, and that three days prevents. Does that make sense?
Do you see any other conflicts outside that?
No.
I didn't either, but, so, if we could, but, but both of them in a form of conditions, the one being different than the conditions by the planning commission.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Cherry.
Motion made, the second is under discussion.
I haven't had anything to add on this.
I had a chance to walk the property with Mr. Blythe, I don't have any questions.
I don't have any questions.
I do want to say that I am glad you found a place for your business in our county. I know that you've looked at a couple of places before this, and I'm glad you were able to find one that was right set.
We got very good advice from the zoning board to find a better, more suitable, out-of-way place. I appreciate the contributions.
Motion made, second. All those who say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Thanks for, thanks for enjoying our evening of civics.
Thanks.
Bye-bye.
One last item on your agenda. It's another public hearing. Ms. Summers will give a brief introduction, and then we can hear from all in the public that's interested.
It's late. Everyone's tired, so I'll make this quick. This is an easy one. The C.E. Johnson Agricultural and Forestal District was first created in 1980. Over the years, it has been renewed. The district was approved for renewal on August 6th. Some of the, all of the conditions remain the same within the district. The advisory committee met. They reviewed all of the applications for the district and the draft ordinance. They recommended approval. The planning commission reviewed the same information, and they've also recommended approval to this board to extend the district for an additional 10 years. And 10 years is the maximum that these districts can go for before they're reviewed.
There is an addition of just a couple acres, wasn't there? A couple, or two posses or something?
That is correct.
So these districts are formed by ordinance, and as is the case, each time these come up, the board has to approve a new ordinance, which is why you have to go through the public hearing process. There's an ordinance in your packet that is available for approval. If someone wanted to move adoption of the C.E. Johnson Agricultural and Forestal District ordinance, that would be the proper path forward.
Is anyone willing to speak to this application? Are you?
The public hearing's open, sir.
Public hearing's open. Correct.
Public hearing is.
Public hearing is open. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion. Renewal of this forestal district.
Forests.
Second. Motion made, second. This is a roll call vote. Mr. Fraser?
Aye.
Mr. Lusinski?
Aye.
Ms. Snibb?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Aye, all seven. We'll accept the motion for adjournment.
I say.
All those who say aye?
Aye.
Good night. All the bodies that are still open.
Got it, sir.
I got it.
He should have done it from the roof.
No, there might have been some.